She said the complaints are getting so regular. So that's why they're not complaining. But it's like, yeah, we do it long term. Probably. But I told them, it's just, it's just.
Good morning. Let me know when you get the lead. I'm just waiting back for some of that. I've got somebody there listening that I want to be there.
Good morning. I'd call to order the regular meeting of August the 20th, 2025. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Mr. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Beck.
Here.
Mr. Chauncey.
Here.
Mr. Graham.
Here.
Mr. Hilton.
Here.
Dr. Highlander.
He is walking in the door, so he'll be.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Mackey.
Here.
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Shipley.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mr. Chairman Iversol.
Here. Invitation and pledge to be conducted by Commissioner Mackey. So all please rise.
Thank you, Chair. I have Pastor Ed Alexander, and he's from Stanley Heights Baptist Church. He's going to bring the prayer, and I'll lead us in the pledge.
Pause and to remember how small we are in all of creation, and yet there are matters of great importance here today. And so we are thankful that you are God who intervenes in the affairs of men, that you care about all matters, great and small. You know, when a sparrow falls, the very hairs on our head are numbered. And so we're thankful that you care to intervene in the affairs of men, that you care about truth and justice and right. And I pray that the business that is conducted here in this great state of Tennessee and in Hamilton County, that things would be done in a manner that is upright and in order, and that things move forward at the correct speed and in the correct way that does the best and most amount of good for the most people. Pray for wisdom for each commissioner here this morning, for all the staff, for each who will be involved in conducting business here today, that what's done would be right and true, and that you would give assistance in clarity and wisdom in knowing how best to carry things forward so that way may prosper, we may enjoy life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness. We thank you for Christ and for all that he's done, the offer of eternal life that he gives to each one. Lord, we pray your blessing on this chamber this morning, for it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Fall.
We, uh, we do have a packed house. I know we do have, I guess, some TVs on their way so that we can put in the hallway. They're delayed a little bit, so we will have those within the next.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Fifteen minutes.
Point of privilege. It's his birthday. Here you go. Let's all sing happy birthday to him. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Jeffy. Happy birthday to you. Blow it out so we don't get in fire trouble.
All right, what did you turn to me? No. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Baker. Thank you all. Nothing better doing your birthday than being here, right? Especially what's on the agenda today, so it's a good deal. We do have two presentations this morning. Our first presentation will be the Hamilton County Regional Health Council. Becca, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here today. The presentation that you will hear will be from the Regional Health Council on a collaborative project between Health and Social Services, the Regional Health Council and Hamilton County Parks and Rec. Matt is in the back as well. You're going to hear from three speakers. Crystal Howard is the Director of Community Health. Skylar Phillips is the Vice Chair of the Regional Health Council, and Stephen Meyer, the Chair. The back part of the presentation will be on the Rails to Trails Project, which came out of a Step One initiative to promote healthy living and for everyone to enjoy the beautiful space that Hamilton County has to offer. With that, I will turn it over to Director Crystal Howard.
Good morning. And so like Becca said, I'm Crystal Howard. I'm the Director of Community Health Services at the Health Department, and I just want to give you all a little bit of information about the Regional Health Council. There we go. So to provide a brief history of how we came to be, in 1993, the Department, the Tennessee Department of Health began holding monthly meetings with community health directors and health promotion leaders with a focus on local input to impact health. In 1996, the Commissioner of the State Department of Health created guidelines and developed regional and county health councils throughout the state. In 1997, Howard Roddy, the Administrator of the Health Department at that time, assigned Bill Ulmer, who was the Director of Community Health Services at the Health Department, with the task of creating the Hamilton County Regional Health Council. And since our Health Department already had an advisory board that was already doing great work to improve the health of the residents of Hamilton County, it was able to modify the structure, focus, and the responsibilities to be in align with the state. So also in 97, we created bylaws as well, and it was approved by the Commission in 1997 for the Health Advisory Board to be renamed to the Hamilton County Regional Health So within this, the state says county health councils have the power to be vital grassroots partners in creating public health change at the local level. And what this does, it allows us to have, because our communities know what is needed on an intimate basis, it allows us really to have, really forefront into what needs to change and identifying gaps and how we can move forward with improving health. So the purpose of the Hamilton County Regional Health Council serves as an advisory body to the Health Department. It also serves as the lead community-based organization on important matters related to the health of Hamilton County residents. The role of the council should also be to monitor the status of residents. So we do a community health assessment every four years, and we identify where those health needs are. And then we recommend and develop strategies to promote the health of the community. In addition to that, some of our, again, our responsibilities are assessing the health status of the community, prioritizing those health needs, developing a community action plan, identifying key resources needed to move those initiatives forward. We serve as a liaison between the community and the health-related services. So we do have monthly meetings that take place the first Monday of every month. Due to Labor Day, our next meeting is going to be held on September 8th at the Hamilton County Health Department from 9:30, well, 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We also provide input regarding health and health-related matters, and we review proposals as well as other funding requests. So I will turn it over to Captain Skylar Phillips, and he will go through our membership selection process and some initiatives that have been accomplished through the Regional Health Council.
Thank you, ma'am. As she said, my name is Skylar Phillips. I'm a captain paramedic with the Chattanooga Fire Department and have the privilege of serving as the Vice Chair of the Regional Health Council. The membership of the Health Council consists of 27 members. Each of these, each 11 members of Hamilton County Board Commission may appoint one voting member, and you all should have a list of those individuals presented with you today, as well as we have four ex officio members that include Commissioner David Sharp, Mayor Womp, Director Bohannon, and Dr. Miller with the medical officer. There are also 16 at-large members who are all appointed by the mayor's office. All right, and some of the things that the Regional Health Council's been working with over the years, these things come along long before most of us that are on the board now or have ever worked on, but the Step One Project, the Step One Program started in 2005, and it was a collaboration between Hamilton County offices and the Health Department. And the mission is to support and enhance long-term health, healthy lifestyle for Hamilton County residents through innovative partnership, policy, and educations. The IRIS program, infant mortality, it has forever been a focus of the Regional Health Department, and this includes the formation of the Task Force to Reduce Infant Mortality, which has been running for many, many years. And this work continues today at the, as the IRIS Umbrella Project, which stands for the Increasing the Rate of Infant Survival and Fetal Infant Mortality Review Work. The Tobacco-Free Chattanooga began around 1995. I'm a lifetime member of Hamilton County. I remember this initiative when I was in high school, coming around to try to make a smoke-free Chattanooga, tobacco-free Chattanooga. The name has changed recently to the Coalition of Health Partners, who collaborate in community initiatives to address tobacco use and now vaping. The Regional Health Council played a significant role in this coalition, and in 2015, Mayor Coppins and the department launched Mayor's Smoke-Free Community Coalition, which was supported by the 11th City, by the 11th City and Hamilton County Mayor. We also have the Mental Health Collaboration, which began immediately after COVID and brought together the community agencies addressing mental health, substance abuse, and related issues. Increased collaboration and partnership to build referral relationships and sharpen our focus. And then finally, the picture of our health. We have county health councils lead the county health department process with support from their respective county health departments, regional health departments, and Office of Strategic Initiatives. Within the five-step process, the county health assessment and community health improvement plan aim to increase the impact of the Health Council by providing framework for councils and assessment of action planning process. So currently, the Regional Health Council has three committees that are working under it. We are actually working at this time to make sure that the three committees that we have are the ones that are still best suited for this community. But at the time, we have an Addiction and Dependency Committee, which is chaired by Dr. Rebecca Morton, and the staff facilitator is Katrina Hereford. And then we have the Aging Committee, which is chaired by Byron Bartley, and the staff facilitator is Taylor Teasley. And then the Disability Committee is chaired by me, as well as my staff facilitator is Christopher Marinello. And the three of these are working together to try to focus on a few groups in the city that they, or the county that we can make an impact on. And with that, I will ask the Chair to come forward, Stephen Meyer.
Good morning, Commissioners. Steve Meyer, current Chairman of the Regional Health Council. I want to talk to you just a few minutes about the Saudi Daisy Rails to Trails Project. This particular project was initiated in 2017 when I was a new member of the Regional Health Council. We started trying to get meetings with TVA, and it was a real struggle just to get a meeting set up with the appropriate people at TVA. The big item here, the project is six miles long, and you can tell from here, up at the upper end is where the McDonald's store is in Saudi Daisy. And then you come down and follow the Sequoia Access Road almost all the way over to the Sequoia Nuclear Power Plant. Okay, this particular project, as we were working on it, kind of fell through the cracks because of staff turnover at TVA. TVA owns the right of way for all of the six miles on this particular project. And so we're now to the point where the, we're going through different committees within TVA to gradually obtain the ownership of the property. Once that's done, then Hamilton County and Saudi Daisy will be able to own the property and move along with the project. Now, the, at this point in time, I and my staff, as well as the County, Hamilton County Engineering Department, have estimated the total cost for a six-mile Rails to Trails Project will be approximately $8 million. So we're looking at the possibility of breaking this particular project into three phases, of which the county will be working with the neighbors and the people in the area to determine where those three phases might occur. And so where they get the most pedestrian and bicycle traffic along the trail. So once again, we wanted to let you know about the project. The, you, you at the County Commission agreed to allow a grant application earlier this winter, and the county was awarded a $1 million grant to begin preliminary engineering and survey to be able to start quantifying the information that is needed for the design and the final, final project. So if you have any questions in regards to the project, like I say, I've been working on the project since 2017, be happy to answer any questions you have, and we look forward to supporting this project to its completion.
Do you have questions here, Commissioner Shipley?
Thanks, Chairman. I was involved in this many years before.
Yes, sir.
2017 as Mayor of Saudi Daisy. At that time, there was some issue our county commissioner at times did not want to do this. At the time, I collected names of builders, civic groups, everybody. This project was going to be great for the entire community. And history of this is the old railroad track that went into Sequoia that took the supplies in when they were building. And it, since it's grown up in areas, tracks, um, tarble looking.
It was last used when I was county engineer in 86.
Yeah, and this would really be a project that would help that entire area. Not only that, but people would come there and use it, like they do the riverwalk from Saudi Daisy down. They would come back up there. I would be supporting this project.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Okay, see no more lights. Appreciate the presentation. Okay, our next presentation, Mr. Bell. Home Builders Association.
My name is Julian Bell, 3221, Harrison Pike. I'm sorry. My name is Julian Bell, 3221, Harrison Pike. I'm with the Home Builders Association of Greater Chattanooga. I'm here representing not only the Home Builder Association, but the, the, the Hamilton County residential housing industry, supported by the Greater Chattanooga Association of Realtors. I'm here today to talk about the presentation that was given by some citizens at the beginning of the meeting last week. I'm not going to try to refute everything is in there, but there, there's some points that I really think are important to be made. I want to first start off by talking a little bit about growth, and the housing industry believes that growth is not only necessary, but it's inevitable. And the question really is, where is it going to take place? As a county, we need growth, so we base our county budgets and revenue sources on, and without it, there are consequences. We are promoting our county as a great place to live, and it is. We're going to a great deal of effort and spending time and money to attract employers to bring their jobs to our county, and we will be successful. In our opinion, the issue is, do we want people to live here and work here, be able to afford a home here, or do you want them to work here and live somewhere else, taking their tax dollars elsewhere? We agree on the challenges brought on by growth in terms of infrastructure. We disagree on the remedy. Stopping growth or seriously slowing growth not only isn't the answer, it isn't a realistic option unless the county is prepared to either reduce services or raise taxes. We want to be part of the discussion on how we address the challenges the county faces, but we don't think imposing an overlay on the bulk of the county through the area plans that will slow or stop housing growth, raise housing prices, and further drive housing to other counties is the answer. According to the Times Free Press in July, county population is growing at about 1% per year. According to the Regional Planning Agency, since 2015, there's an average of 790 building permits pulled, single-family and townhomes, per year. In the same period, according to Regional Planning Agency, there's an average of 556 building lots approved per year. Fewer lots are being developed by far than homes are built. The average lot size over this period in the unincorporated areas, according to the Regional Planning Agency, is three-quarters of an acre. The average developed lot size in Chattanooga is .43 of an acre. Mr. Baker, the average lot size in District 2 is 1.06 acres. The point I'm trying to make here is that we don't have explosive growth, we have growth, and it's already made up of lots far larger than what's being talked about in the unincorporated portions of Hamilton County. The slides presented last week and shown to me by Commissioner Baker and sent to me by Commissioner Baker show that Hamilton County is the sixth fastest-growing county in Tennessee over the period from April 1st of 2020 to July 1st of 2024. It shows that nine other counties allow fewer homes per acre in their agricultural zones than Hamilton County. That is true. What it doesn't show is that they have far more districts for residential housing lots and growth, and what it doesn't show is that the median household income of Hamilton County as of 2024 is last on that list, 10th, ninth if you look at the year before. So if we restrict the ability to build homes in 78% of the county, as the proposed area plans would do, how does that impact our families? Higher home prices, more people living in surrounded, surrounding counties, paying property taxes in other counties and working here, and making it even more difficult for our children and grandchildren to live here. We don't need an increase in the size of the lots, we're already building on large lots. So if you make it harder to develop in 78% of the country and are succeeding. make it harder to develop in eight, in 78% of the country, and are successful in forcing all growth inward to the cities, what's the result? Increasing price pressure in our municipalities, increased congestion there, and forcing the municipalities to deal with the challenges of, of these infrastructure changes without the benefit of county tax dollars, which they pay and which are overwhelmingly spent outside of the municipalities. The slides last week advocated for an increase in the side, in the lot size in the A1 zone. What would be the result? Well, obviously, our average lot size in the unincorporated areas would increase. Infrastructure costs will increase, since larger lots results in more street length, more sewer line length, more telephone, more waterline, all of the infrastructure required for, for residential development, and, and no more money to pay for it. Well, we've been talking about farmland loss. What will increasing the average lot size do to that? It will accelerate farmland loss. I think it goes unnoticed sometimes that the developers are blamed for loss of farmland, farmland. On every transaction involving farmland land, there's a farmer selling his land for reasons. Most of the time, it's the nest egg that they've been saving for their retirement or for something to leave to their family. Advocating for large lots is advocating for sprawl. There's been a lot of talk about forcing home building to take place on lots that have already been approved. My understanding is that these lots that are being discussed are lots approved by WWTA, that lots that will be placed on sewers. What I hear being said when I hear that is, let's stop development, at least for the next five years. That's neither realistic nor possible. Home builders and developers don't decide where they build. The market decides where they build and what they build. Home buyers decide where building takes place. If home buyers want to buy homes in these approved areas, that's where the homes will be built. If they want something different, they'll look at one of the surrounding counties where homes are less expensive and buy there. The home building industry needs options to meet the market, or the market goes elsewhere. People want to live in areas, including those that are on sewers, but also those that are not on sewers. Otherwise, if they live elsewhere, we get the traffic, we get the wear and tear on our roads, and none of the track tax revenue, or at least very little of it. Finally, a word about whether we need more homes or not. In last week's presentation, the argument was made that we already have enough homes, that housing inventory was high enough. What it didn't say was despite the housing inventory that we have, and you need inventory in a housing market, just like you need it in any other market, housing prices continue to rise. We don't need a plan that restricts growth, growth. The proposal in front of you today will actually reduce the allowed density in 78% of the county. And it leaves open the possibility of moderate density where we have sewers or other approved technologies. We urge you to support the amendments being offered today. They're not our choice for what we believe is best for the county, but we believe they'll reduce the harm that will be done to our county in terms of housing prices, revenue growth, and sprawl, and our significant compromise. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Josh Branham, Governmental Affairs Director, Greater Chattanooga Realtors. The sheet that was placed on your desk today, this was new information that was provided on August 8 by our National Association of Realtors Deputy Chief Economist from Dr. Jessica Louts, where she shows the increased housing demand if mortgage rates go from 7% down to an even flat, to a flat 6% mortgage rate. If rates ease to 6%, which I'm no economist, of course, but it is widely agreed that the Fed is looking to cut rates two more times this year alone. If rates ease to 6%, an estimated 9,700 additional households in the Chattanooga metro area would be able to afford the median priced home, which includes almost 3,200 renter households. This, this signals a significant, a meaningful release of pent up demand once borrowing costs fall to that threshold. And in full disclosure, this is for the Chattanooga metro area. This doesn't apply just to Hamilton County, but I believe it is pertinent to this conversation. The metro's median existing pri, median existing home price is $332,000. So rate relief at this price level is likely to translate into more buyer traffic and more contracts when financing costs improve. And so I'll say that this data comes from the National Association of Realtors proprietary calculations and MOS data, as well as the Bureau of Labor Statistics. In closing, I'll say that Realtors and home builders have valuable on the ground insight into how these planning policies affect current and future homeowners. Greater Chattanooga Realtors uniquely advocates for both consumers and for property owners by protecting private property rights and promoting access to attainable housing for everyone. And thank you all for your service and for your time this morning.
Okay, real quick, Josh, before you sit back down, I, I've got a question. It says Chattanooga, Tennessee metro area. I didn't realize it was metro, but what, what does that encompass?
That encompasses the surrounding areas. Like I mentioned, it doesn't just-
How many, how many counties? What counties are there?
It does dip down into Georgia, North Georgia, so it'd probably be Walker County and Dade County and Catoosa County as well.
So three, three Georgia counties and how many Tennessee counties?
Would suspect, again, this is from our economists, but our association, we covered Hamilton County and Sequoia County as well, which all is all in the same area.
Is it Bradley or Marion that's also?
Well, our footprint is Hamilton County and Sequoia County.
Okay. I think this is includes six counties, I think, in this area. What, what would, what would be the impact on Hamilton County? I think that's what we're deciding, because we're not, this resolution coming today has nothing to do with the three counties in North Georgia that's in a different state, and, and it doesn't have anything to do with the two other counties in, in-
That, and yes, sir, and that's a valid point. I'll say too, that these statistics come from our National Association, which they can't delve into every county across the country.
Can you guys locally do that?
Do we locally do that? I gave the presentation about two months ago that was purely Hamilton County. They looked at housing over 20 years. So with that data, I can, I, I did provide that, and I can provide that again for you all.
Yeah, let's, let's get a current copy. I'd like to see that currently, because I don't want this to be misleading, that Hamilton County needs 10,000 more homes, because we're going to have 10,000 more buyers if rates drop from seven to 6%. Because that's kind of misleading, so.
Well, that did disclose that this wasn't for just Hamilton County.
Right, perfect. I just want to make sure it's clarity. Commissioner Chauncey, you have a question?
Chairman, thank you, Josh. So I think another point that you were trying to make is that you're projecting that the interest rates are going to be lowered in the future, which is definitely going to make housing a little bit more in demand, a little more affordable. So I think that just goes with Hamilton County periods. I, I think that was another point that you were trying to make, just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. All right, see no more lights. Oh, hang on, Commissioner Baker.
Yeah. Hey, Josh. Yeah, I'm looking at the ours, the real estate consulting company that we hired to do an analysis of the market. But on the metro market, it is Hamilton, Marion, Sequoia, Catoosa, Dade, and Walker. So I'd love to see, you know, since we're specifically talking about Hamilton, to focus just on Hamilton. And so could you, how soon could you find that data?
It's the presentation I gave two months ago. I can send it to you all as soon as-
I mean, like today, like right now?
As soon as I sit down at my desk, I can-
Beautiful. Go grab it and we'll go over it in a little bit. Thank you. Mr. Bell? So I'm sitting here looking at all this stuff. Can you go over that density information again for me, please? That you were talking about, the lot sizes?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So according to RPA, if you look at the developed lots over the last 10 years since 2015, the average size in the unincorporated areas, and you can limit it just to the unincorporated areas, was three quarters of an acre. Within the city of Chattanooga for that same period was .43 of an acre. In your, in your district specifically was 1.06 acres. Right, right. And that would include Walton, which is two acres per, per house, and then unincorporated? It includes Signal Mountain, it includes your district. I can't break it down just for your, for the area, for example, or for your district outside of the municipalities. Okay, good deal. All right. So Williamson, Montgomery, Knox, Rutherford, they're all much less dense than us. Did you- On the agricultural zone, yes, yeah, yeah. I mean, that, that's clear. They have more residential zones, so there's a, there's many more zones allowing residential prop, residential housing. But there, that one agricultural zone does have a, a lower density than what we have in Hamilton County. Which I think is pretty much what we've been focused on, on A1. Would you agree? Well, we talk about density and we talk about lot size. And yeah, density is where we have focused. Yeah. I mean, those are counties, we're taking fastest growing counties and then looking at, I mean, I question the relevance of a lot of the counties. I think some of them are probably more closely aligned with us. But we can pull data from, from any places to, to find similarities. Well, and I appreciate you doing that from last week when we were talking apples and oranges. You've at least made it clear that, I mean, when in A1, we still are more dense than our, these other counties. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, see no more lights on. Appreciate it. Thanks for the presentation. I will tell you, we've got some more items on the agenda before we get to this resolution item. For those of you standing on top and at the bottom, we just got the TVs working out in the foyer here. So if you want to step out, there's places to sit. If you have anything to say, you'll kind of follow along with us. You can step back in, but I'll leave that option up. But there are TVs set up that you can watch real time out there. So if you want to, I don't want to disrespect anybody and have them stand when there's chairs available out in the foyer. Okay. We will move forward since that finalizes our presentations. Minutes needing to be entered and recorded for the recess meeting on July 30, 2025, the agenda session on July 30, 2025, and the regular meeting August 6, 2025, what would be-
Move for approval.
Second, Mr. Baker made the motion. Commissioner Smith seconded that motion. See no lights. No one standing for comment. Do me a favor, because what we'll do is we'll start lining up. If you two gentlemen move backwards a little bit, because this is an area that when we ask people if they want to make comments, if they'll come stand here before the item is brought up, and we'll know that they want to say something. So thank you. So no one's standing for comment. Real call, Mr. Clark.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Brim?
Yes.
Mr. Hildon?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. We also have five reports that will need to be entered into the record, Mr. Clark.
Will do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We will begin with resolutions. And due to our crowd, we were going to delay it because we didn't have TVs, but now we got TVs. We're going to, we're going to put it first. So we will start with 825-18. Madam Clerk, we'll go ahead and do it off the bat.
Resolution 825-18, a resolution advising the Regional Planning Commission and the Regional Planning Agency. It is the will of the Hamilton County Commission to change Plan Hamilton in accordance with the specified changes.
Move to approve.
Mr. Mackey made the motion. Commissioner Chauncey seconded that motion. The lights, Commissioner Shipley.
I'm going to start this off to say that what I've got to say is not ill will toward any of my colleagues on this board. I want you to know that. But I disagree with you. Oh, I really disagree. We have a very divided commission on this subject. Not only divided commission, but entire divided county as to what we should be doing. Very few people feel like we should have more density. Majority of the people, not just these people here, but people you run into daily in the stores, wherever. What is this? Why do we have to have more houses? Are we not getting enough tax revenue? Well, I've always said, you know, that tax revenue gets eaten up by the system. Very little money left at the end of that time. I've even had people say, look, before you do this, please just raise our taxes a little bit. We would rather pay a little more tax and have our communities intact. The top priority to me is schools. How do we continue to get schools, make them bigger when we have no more money right now? We made a bond, $250 million. We're going to spend that money on upgrades. My schools in my district, like Saudi Daisy and Sail Creek, Sail Creek schools are to capacity zero. My schools in Say Daisy, except for Say Daisy High School, are to capacity. So if we have one of these big track builds come to where they're going to build 250 houses in the area right there between Sail Creek and Say Daisy, where does those kids go to school? Are we back in mobile units? Do we have to haul things in to educate our kids the way I start shifting districts? I've said it in here many times, I'm not opposed to growth. I made my living just like them guys in them green shirts, construction my whole life. I just think we need to look at this a little more, and that we need to slow down. We're moving at a speed with two per acre. There is a lot of available building out there without rushing to that. So we add a motion and a second. I would ask that we extend this 60 days from today and look at it again. More meetings. I know that Julian don't like that. I'm sure some of the commissioners up here don't like that. But that says a point in them county. We got to get it right. We can't get it wrong. That's all.
So Commissioner, Commissioner, are, are you asking, hang on, hang on a second. Are you, are you putting a motion that we-
I'm putting a motion to extend that 60 days. If there's no 60 days, we can't come, we vote, we're up or down, be done.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, so Commissioner, Commissioner Highlander. Okay, so we've got a motion to extend this resolution for 60 days. And it's Commissioner Shipley, Commissioner Highlander has seconded that motion. Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. I would agree wholeheartedly with my, with my contemporary over in Saudi Daisy Sail Creek area. I, the statement was made to me that a very small number of people are influencing the lack of density change. And I will tell you, I have had, I was away from my phone for a couple of days, and I had about 700 texts and emails. Not a single one wanted to increase density, not a single one. So I know that we need growth. I know that we did, but it needs to be responsible growth and reasonable growth. And, and that's what I'm, and, and I think if we could study this for 60 more days, it would be a good, a good thing. I, I had not been approached by Commissioner Shipley about that. We did not break the sunshine rule, did we, Commissioner Shipley? But when he said it, I think it makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, let me, let me remind the audience, let's, let's not clap. Okay. We, we don't allow that type of disruption on anything we discuss. It's part of our rules. So please refrain. Okay, see no more lights. We do have this up, but I would like to, to get the general public, those for and those against- Okay. See no more lights. We do have this up, but I would like to, to, uh, get the general public, uh, those for and those against to, to have a discussion. So we'll use the same rules as we used last week. Each side gets 10 minutes and then you get five minutes to rebuttal from each side. Commissioner Sharp.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Um, just real quickly, that. I don't want to get too far into this. Uh, is, is this perfect? No, I don't, I don't believe this is perfect. Is there more work we could do? Yes, I do believe there's more work that we could do. Is there any reason, if we pass something today, that we cannot make amendments moving forward? That's a question. Can we not amend a plan as, as we move forward? Did I address that to the attorney or?
I think, I think we can make amendments at any time.
Okay.
We can amend today.
Okay. Chairman, that, that, that's really all I needed to know. Um, I don't see any reason why we need to delay this anymore. If there are, you know, pertinent amendments that could be made, um, as we move along. I know that, that in all likelihood, there's some things that I'd like to adjust, um, as we go into subdivision regulations, uh, which will follow this. I do not believe this, I mean, I could list off of several things that I believe this plan is missing. But I see no reason to delay. So, uh, thank you, Chairman. That's all.
Okay. See no more lights. Commissioner Mackey turned your light off. You won't be recognized.
Mr. Chairman, for the first time, I've heard a representative say they think they would support a tax increase. I almost fell out of my chair. I, I'd like to know who those people are who want to see their, their taxes raised. I'd like for somebody to tell me that the budget in Hamilton County, it's a big budget, but we're still told that, that revenue is tight. And, um, I, I'd love to know what is going down. The cost of turning that light on every day is gonna, is never gonna go down. The Hamilton County workers, they're gonna get increases in pay and, and their insurance is gonna go up and it's going to require more revenue. And somebody need to make the statement. If you are not growing, you're compelled to raise taxes. I'm not gonna do it. I am not raising taxes. And so in order to raise taxes, we have, we need more people paying into the system. It is property taxes that support and, and run Hamilton County. And the more property tax you get, it, it helps with the, the amount of money coming in. And, and I keep wondering, you know, I mean, I, I enjoy these pristine views and country way of life. But who's gonna pay for that? That home, that property owner, they, in my opinion, ought to be able to do what they want if they're doing, being legal and paying taxes. Ought to be, be able to do what they want with their property. You and I, we profess to be capitalist. We're not socialist. We are not socialist wanting to control the means of production. And so I asked the regional planning, I said, when you go out, ask the people, do they support having government tell them what they can do with their property? Once government do that, they're gonna start telling, the government's gonna tell people what books can go in the library, what teachers can teach. And we're way, we're going way down that road towards a socialist form of government. And you and I, we are Americans, we're democratic, and we believe in freedom. Thank you, Chair.
You calling me, Chairman?
Yes, sir. Your light's on, Commissioner.
Let me be clear on what I said. I didn't advocate to raise taxes in Hamilton County. I said, people have asked me, would it be better to raise our taxes a little bit rather than flood our streets, our schools? We got fire departments out here right now that are over the five mile limit. We got a lot of issues and none of them simple. So, and we have, do not have the main bill, more firehouse. We do not have even the money to put another ambulance service home. I was not advocating to raise taxes. I was saying people had asked me, wouldn't it be better? That's it.
Okay. All right. See no more lights. Here's the motion that, here's what we're looking at right now. We're not looking at Plan Hamilton. We're looking at delaying it, uh, for 60 days. That's the vote in front of us. So if any conversation about the delay, anybody wants to talk, we'll, 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 we'll give three minutes apiece. Because that's what we're, that's the vote that's coming up, is delaying it for 60 days. We're not talking about Plan Hamilton. It's delayed for six days. But keep in mind that if this gets delayed, we're talking another 60 days these folks have to come back. Okay. So any comments from the general public on the delay? Start your name and address. Get three minutes.
Signal Mountain. Um, much has been said about whether individual districts should have different rules related to their variations. Four commissioners who only represent districts completely within the city of Chattanooga don't.
You just keep in mind, this is about the delay.
Absolutely, sir. Uh, one commissioner stated this week, all districts should have the same rules. It's a far cry from comments he made last year in this very chamber, um, when he said their problems are different than my problems. My side of town is completely different. Any commissioner could opt in or out. This resolution removes, the resolution being considered, um, removes a proposal that was specific to Signal Mountain, which would have required geotech reports for new subdivisions due to the history of mining in the area. Um, the stated justification is that current regulations sufficiently address report requirements. In March of this year, the Regional Planning Commission approved a preliminary plat for a subdivision, which includes 15 houses located on what TDEC has identified.
I don't need, I don't mean to interrupt you, but this, are you saying that we should delay it for 60 days or should not delay it? Because that's what we're talking about now. It's just delay or not.
Understood. Delay it for 60 days.
And why should we delay it for 60 days?
Because this resolution is, um, not ready for prime time.
Okay.
TDEC has identified two abandoned underground coal mines underneath the subdivision. County staff has stated they can't require a geotech report because it's not in the existing regs, but they hope the developer does the right thing. Individual county districts face challenges and require different regulations. And you can't just pretend one size fits all. This resolution is not ready to be voted on and it needs significant changes and the 60-day delay proposed, um, would help continue those discussions.
Thank you. Sorry for interrupting you there. Just want to make sure we, so apologize. So next, name, address, you get three minutes. And again, the topic is, is should we delay or your opinion should not?
Hi, my name is Aleah and I'm in District Four. Uh, talked to you last night, but I think that you guys should delay. And I am going to say why, because I hear a lot about growth and property rights. And I think who is entitled to housing? Who are we building for? We know that filling in floodplains displaces water. Where does that water go? Well, I think we saw the other week, I know that I did, where that water goes. And I live in the city center, so this specific issue does not directly impact me. But I grew up here and I love these people. This is a proud place and people care for one another. We aren't asking for no growth, but we are asking for responsible growth. And there is no use adding inventory if doing so comes at the expense of existing inventory. That's why I am asking specifically, when you guys are doing this delay, to talk about how much reduction in building on floodplains there should be. I think 100% to 65% reduction is not only fair, but common sense. Doing so ensures that we maintain our reputation as a safe place for all to live, to buy a home and to maintain that home and not lose it at expense to floodplains. And I just wanted to add, because I do live in, uh, downtown city area. Chattanooga's had a growth of about 3%, but we are still getting about a 22% property increase, uh, tax increase. So growth alone is not going to stop property taxes from increasing. And, uh, I just want to advocate for responsible and to listen to all these people that came here to talk on behalf of what goes on in their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We've got about five minutes left on the clock. So as a total, so we'll put, put, we've used five minutes. So let's go back to five minutes. And five minutes for anybody else that wants to talk, because I think there's one more person wants to talk. So.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Brendan Jennings, 6772 Grazing Lane, Birchwood. The one thing I'll point out is a, a matter of fairness. Many of us worked with commissioners, worked with the RPA over the last two years to come to compromises, learn more about the issues that were involved that you've all had to wrestle with for a long time. And, and come to a better understanding of how we could get growth, but do it in a responsible way that doesn't undermine, you know, the basis for us choosing where we live and work and play. And have that change, the character of that change, uh, be totally undermined. So the, the resolution, the fairness of it is, it came almost at the last minute. The elements did not go through the give and take that many of you engaged in. I, I spoke with you, Chairman, uh, Gino, uh, uh, Mr. Highlander. So it's a matter of basic fairness. I, so I endorse the additional 60 days. I think it's a wise, uh, uh, decision, uh, uh, submitted by Mr. Mackey. And I think it just gives us an opportunity to also compare apples to apples because currently I think a lot in that resolution, uh, refers to current, uh, uh, zoning, uh, regulations and not with what's been put out with Plan Hamilton. So in, in some occasions, you know, they'll say, it looks like you're, you know, you're reducing, you're compromising, but you're really not. So I, that needs to come to the attention and to the fore, uh, because these people have engaged for two years in good faith. And I think we deserve the good faith responded to, uh, in like manner. Thank you very much.
Okay, next.
Good morning. My name is Allison Williams. My address is 3400 Glendon Drive, Chattanooga. I would like to speak in favor of the delay. And that is informed by my perspective as a citizen of Hamilton County and also as a professional hydrologist. I also have grave concerns about, um, increasing development in floodplains. My husband's grandmother lost her home in a flood, so I know firsthand in my family what, what that looks like and what that does. I've also worked on the front lines of cleaning up from Hurricane Helene in northeast Tennessee. And I want to remind us that we dodged a bullet here in Chattanooga. Hurricane Helene was projected to hit us here. If it had hit us here, we would be in the position that Asheville is in. However, since Hurricane Helene occurred, there have been changes in the national level in terms of FEMA and their ability to support communities in recovery. And so I want to, um, encourage this commission during the 60-day delay to consider how floodplain development sits with your sense of fiscal responsibility. Because if we continue to build in floodplains and there is no federal support available to support cleanup, we are inviting a mess and a huge expense to our county. Um, thank you. Allison Williams.
Okay. Thank you. We've got, uh, anyone else? We got like a minute left for those that. All right.
Jan Ditzer, 2413 Wood Thrush Drive. I know the occurrence of the floods last week opened up everybody in the whole county's eyes to what all's happening. Environmental changes upon us. It's important to, uh, to protect our natural resources, the trees, the floodplains especially. And I think that the Planning Commission or the RPA, they need to go back to the boards and start over on some other things. They've focused on density and everything, but they've neglected the other things that are integral components to establishing a growth plan. And that happens to be your natural resources, like your trees and your floodplains. And go back and set definitions and parameters. Not every patch of ground qualifies to be an open space, a green space or a community space. Each one of those spaces are designated with their own definition as to what they contribute to a plan and a community, uh, development. And I, I really think that they just need to put it back on the back burner for another 60 days and reschedule and do things again.
All right. Your time is expired. So that's all? That supports and any that opposes? We've only got one that opposes, that wants to speak. Okay. You got three minutes.
Julian Bell, 3221 Harrison Pike here for the home builders for a lot more than one person. This has been going on for a couple of years. Even after today's vote, it goes back to the Planning Commission in September, at least that's my understanding, for more discussion. And then after their disposition of it, it will come back here for even more discussion. We don't believe that the uncertainty that's created by prolonging, um, the commission taking a position on this needs to go on. And we'd like to see a vote. There's plenty of, there's plenty of discussion time and coming back to this body, uh, left. And so we would, we would not be in favor of an extension.
Okay. Anyone else speak to oppose? All right.
One sentence. I'll still get to do my stuff later.
Okay. So you oppose the delay?
Uh, I do. And because I feel like we have taken three years, we've put it off, we tabled it. And I'm not really clear what another 90 days would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. 60 days. Uh, okay. That's all from the audience. Back to the deas here. So Commissioner Sharp.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. So that adds a little bit of clarity to me, I believe. So this, this will go back, we vote, this goes to the Planning Commission. They'll discuss it more. It'll then come back to the Hamilton County Commission where we'll have to adopt it. Is that, do I follow this after it goes to Nashville? And at that point in time, at, at which stages can we still offer amendments to the, to the resolution? Anytime. Attorney, may I ask that to Attorney Varnell? No, no, no. So there's, there's multiple times where this is going to be discussed on this deas still. Is there any point in time where we cannot offer amendments to the resolution?
Correct. There is no point in time where you cannot offer amendments to the resolution.
Okay. So we can, okay.
And then once Plan Hamilton is adopted, which this does not adopt Plan Hamilton, I want to make that very clear. This resolution merely provides guidance to the, to the Regional Planning Commission about what the will of this commission is regarding Plan Hamilton. And once Plan Hamilton or some plan is adopted, then it can be amended.
Okay.
With some procedure.
Okay. Thank you. So, you know, it, I, I alluded earlier to some concerns that I have that I think there still needs to be, that, that need to be adjusted or addressed at least, in this planning process, which is still very clearly a process that is ongoing. This is not the end all be all today. And I, I'd mentioned subdivision regulations, but it appears that there may be some opportunities even, even before we get to subdivision regulations. But one of the issues that is of significant concern to me and, and frankly has been, um, forever since I was able to. concern to me, and frankly has been forever since I was able to think logically, is this building in floodplains. I mean, it's an issue. I hear that, see it everywhere. I mean, of course, you know, a lot of politicians will say never, you know, never let a tragedy go to waste, you know, and I think that there's probably a lot of that going on right now as well. I feel for those folks, for everyone that's been impacted by the recent storms. It's heart-wrenching. And also understand, you know, these property rights conversations, but what an individual wants to do on their property should not disturb the, there's a word for it, the peaceful enjoyment of their neighbor's property. And, you know, that term, it can also be subjective and debated, I suppose. But I wanted to ask, and I don't know who, Ms. Renick or Brian, if I should discuss this, but like, when, ask this question to Chairman, if I may, if I may ask this question. When we start going into subdivision regulations, is that an appropriate time to discuss floodplain development? We can still do that then, is what I'm trying to get at. So, I mean, we only have like a year left in this term, and there's a whole lot of meetings that are going on. It's like we need to move the ball down the field.
So, the plans do mention floodplains to a certain extent, but the plan is intended to be the comprehensive plan guiding physical development. So it can be addressed in subdivisions, but before you get to plating the property, there's zoning that influences that, and then the plan itself, which is setting how are we doing development in Hamilton County. So if during the 60 days you would like us to do something, or, you know, explore or research or provide information, I think now would be the time, because the plan, it's intended to implement the plan, and the plan does have implementation, as does the resolution before you, so we would be seeking guidance for that action. But, you know, we're starting with the overall physical plan for the county, moving into influences zoning, and then influences, and then plating comes from that, although there is language about subdivisions in that. So yes, we would be happy to work on that.
Okay, so when's the next Planning Commission meeting?
The next Planning Commission meeting is September 8, and we had previously said, I think about a month ago, that based on what we knew there, then we were shooting for September 8, and I think I repeated last week, based on what we knew, September 8, but certainly would be responding to whatever happened here today. So, there, as of now, or depending on the vote, you know, the September 8 is kind of a placeholder waiting for County Commission action and direction.
Okay. I would like to see the ball continue to move down the field. However, I would like also to continue conversations. So, I want to get together on that. You know, I appreciate that this resolution reduces the amount of floodplain that you can currently build on by 25%, but I'm not sure that that's the right number.
Okay.
And, so I want to continue to talk about that.
We'll set up a meeting and share existing regulations and what the plan says.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
I want to do some, thank you, I want to do some clarity to make sure everybody's on the same page about today's resolution. Today's resolution is telling the Planning Commission what the majority vote here is the attentions of for the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission has to finalize the plan. Once they finalize it, then they adopt the plan, then they send it to the state of Tennessee to be certified. Then, at that point, once it's certified, then they come back to the County Commission, and the County Commission then either approves, or we can still amend. And if we do amends at that point, so the cycle goes backwards again. It goes back to the Planning Commission for them to make changes, and if they do make changes, it goes, they have to adopt it. Again, they got to send it back to the state to be certified, from my understanding. Then it comes back to us to finally approve, because we've asked them to change it again. So, is that correct, attorney?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, because there's a lot of confusion about, you know, what it is. So, did I explain that correctly? Okay. All right. Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. I would, due to the process of going back and forth for certification and back, I would rather, we spent two years, and several of us have met, and Commissioners have listened to a working group. We've tried not to be involved too verbally, because we didn't want to be in violation of sunshine law. I would rather, since we'd have to go to the Planning Commission, have to go to the state, come back, I'd rather get it done right the first time. If it takes 60 more days to do it right, I'd rather get it done right and have something that would be acceptable or close to acceptable when we come back. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Beck?
Chairman, I call for a vote on the 60-day delay.
Okay. So, normal rules is we call for the vote, we got to vote for the vote, right? So this is voting for calling for the vote. So, Mr. ... So this is not for the delay. This is stopping conversation. So, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Baker?
Well, since I have my light on, I'm going to go with no.
No.
I don't want to stop the conversation.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. 60 days.
We're, the voting on calling the vote, that's all we're doing.
That's all we're doing.
We're voting on stopping conversation, because call the vote means stop conversation and vote on it. And as I mentioned, my light was on, so he called that before my light
I could talk, so I would like to talk. Thank you.
You're voting yes or no?
No.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
No.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
No.
Mr. Shipley?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
No. So, conversation continues. I don't like it when it's done to me. Okay, Commissioner Shipley?
It's been my last time, Chairman. When I was here today, Plan Hamilton, we thought was going to be resolved. We thought we had something. All these people that I've seen for months, my district, they were probably a bigger crowd than this. That old area up there was full. I was sitting right up there when one of our Planning Commission members stood up and took the floor and done the amendments. Who did he work with on the amendments? Did he work with the Planning Commission? Did he work with you, Karen? Or did he decide that he wanted to make amendments? Was it unanimously voted down, or was it his idea? Who did that? Go ahead.
If I understand the question, this is a Planning Commission when amendments were first proposed. So, we'll spend a little bit more time and then answer that question directly. So, Planning Commission, there was a change, a change, because it's not an adopted plan, a change recommended or requested by staff, and then there was a public hearing. The, one of the items at the public hearing was the list of proposed changes from the development community, and a packet was handed out. We, as staff, only received it that morning and had not reviewed it, other than just kind of a quick run-through. And then at that point, that's when, on Planning Commission action, moved that forward for County Commission review. But, no, we did, we received it, I believe it was that Monday morning of Planning Commission.
Okay, question. Do you feel like you and your group, an adequate time, by receiving it early in the morning, to be voted on that day?
The comments were to the Regional Planning Commission. I believe the memo was to the Regional Planning Commission, not the Regional Planning Agency, and we were not asked to specifically comment on, I believe, any element in there, and I'm just going to look at Brian for a nod if his memory's the same, and he did not.
All right, thank you.
And Commissioner Baker?
Thank you, Chair. You know, as I've mentioned time and again, we've, at least on Wald's Plateau, been working on the plan for three and a half years. We're about 80% done. We were asked to hold and wait, but the new person at RPA came on, and so we, you know, we're a team player. We folded into that process, but it was slow-going after that, and we were on a roll, and wished we'd stayed on that roll. It was my mistake to be a team player on that one. But, you know, it was a lot of information, a lot of meetings over that time, but really, in the last 60 days, have we spent, you know, we've had maybe more earnest discussion, I would say, than we have in any times past. And, you know, I agree with Commissioner Highlander that, that, let's get it right the first time, instead of going in and then starting amending and amending. Now, I did present a compromise to the home builders, which was rejected. And so, I just think if 92% of the people don't agree with this, what's being presented, I think I'd rethink it. I just would. So, you know, that's my position. I'm not going to, I'll support the extension. What's another 60 days? We got one chance to get it right. We need to get it right.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. We have no more lights on up here. I totally agree. Is, we've got to get this thing right. I'm still a firm believer that this thing needs to be broken down by district. The commissioner has to represent those who voted them into their position. Each district, it's okay they look different. It's okay that we have density in areas. It's okay that we have farmland in areas. It's okay that we have rule in areas. It's okay. It's okay that we have rock in areas. I think some of our fastest-growing counties in the state have decided, whoa, let's slow down. We've got to do some things different. And at some point, we in Hamilton County got to decide, you know what? It's okay to do something different. It's okay. And it's, doing different is not stopping. It's taking a different approach so that we have better success. And I think, I think that's where I stand. So, right now, we're on the vote. Mr. Clerk on delaying this thing for 60 days. That was Commissioner Shipley's amendment. Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion. I see no more lights. We've heard from the audience, so we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
No.
Mr. Chauncey?
No.
Mr. Grimm?
No.
Mr. Hilton?
No.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
No.
Mr. Sharp?
No.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. So the no's, one, is that correct?
That's correct.
By six. So, that extension has been defeated, so we're back to the original 825-34. We're back to the original resolution.
Correct. Motion to Dr. Mackey, seconded by Commissioner Chauncey.
That is correct. Commissioner Mackey made the motion. Commissioner Chauncey seconded that motion. Okay, I see no lights up here for comment from the dees. We'll save rights to comment afterwards. We're going to do the 10 minutes, 10 minutes, five minutes, five minutes. Last week, we started with the, we started with the home builders last week, and this week we'll start with the residents. Is that okay, Mr. Bell? All right. So, how many wants to talk that are opposed to it? Okay. You get 10 minutes total time. I will ask you, come to the mic, name and address, 10 minutes total time for all of you. Now, that's not each. That's for all of you. So I need you to, that's less than a minute apiece if you all get to talk. But the time will begin with your name and address. And hang on, hang on a second. Hang on a second. We, we don't have a quorum. One, two, three, four, five, six. All right, so we don't, we do have a quorum. We've got our six. And just as FYI, if they run the restroom, which we probably are doing, there's speakers back there that can hear me talking right now, and they'll hear you talk. So, so we do have a quorum, attorney? All right, so we will begin. So this, this timing is actually more than you normally get. Normally, you only get 10 minutes and no rebuttal. So, that's the rules of the commission, so. Apologize, I don't make the rules. I have to enforce the rules, and I did give you an extra five minutes, so, and I normally don't talk to the crowd, so. Okay, 10 minutes. Ms. Hilton?
Kim Hilton, 8618 Stone Hill Road. You have a reproduction of the chart from last week's meeting with our comments, plus key takeaways. The chart claims this resolution reduces A1 density from 2 to 1.5 per acre, but that's only for septic. Sewer remains at 2 per acre. It claims R1 will be reduced from 7 to 5 per acre. That is not in the resolution. It claims rezonings will be limited, but this resolution doesn't limit rezonings. It does allow monthly plan changes, alternating sides of the river each month. Rezonings can still occur every month, especially while it's along with the plan. Residents won't plan changes once a year. The chart compares zoning regulations that allow 100% fill to the resolution that allows 75%. But the plan already says 67%, so that's an increase from 67 to 75. This, the chart excludes density increases. Countryside residential, currently 2 per acre, would increase to 3 on sewer. That's a 50% increase. 2.75 on decentralized, that's a 37.5% increase, and decreases on septic to 1.5 per acre. Overall density increases, and density will be decreased for residents and local builders, while it increases for large tract developers. Countryside residential allows 2.5 per acre. Countryside residential, 2.5, it lasts 2.5 per acre. It will be eliminated. If sewer is available, these areas are converted to suburban residential that allows 5 per acre. That's a 100% increase. This resolution allows increased density everywhere. It also changes or deletes statements related to the floodplain, stormwater, and emergency services. When floodplains are filled, water is pushed to other areas, which can make flooding worse, and can result in higher, faster surges. You have been given an example of what happens when a development is allowed to fill in the floodplain. The first page you have in your second packet is a comparison from the Kermifema flood map to the new flood map after the floodplain was developed on one side of the creek. Now, there's another, two other developments going on the other side of the creek. There are lots and stormwater ponds on both sides of the creek. Regulations are needed for quantities of stormwater from new development. Currently, it's not releasing 1,000 gallons of stormwater before development, can release 20,000 after, as long as the hourly release rate remains the same. The extra volume, water volume, can raise flood levels. When a stormwater pond's emergency spillway engages, it bypasses hourly release rates. It releases water faster to protect the stormwater pond from overflowing. Filling in the floodplain and offering more stormwater to be released into waterways is a recipe for disaster. Stricter floodplain regulations could prevent and lower flood insurance premiums for residents through the FEMA current community rating system, which lowers flood insurance costs if stronger floodplain management practices are adopted, such as limiting or prohibiting floodplain development, preserving open sites, and managing stormwater quality effectively. And homeowners could receive up to a 45% discount. We ask for these reasons you deny this resolution. Thank you.
We got seven minutes left.
Jennifer Duval, Coltville Road, Del Creek. Good morning, gentlemen, Commissioners. Remember, you are voting today. If you vote for Resolution 82518, you are voting against 92% of the people of Hamilton County, who have said they don't want this, to Reagan Smith, who was hired to plan us. And this is without an infrastructure plan. A plan needs to happen. That is for everyone in the county, not special interests. The roads are deplorable, and the schools are overcrowded. Vote for who votes, for you, not special interest. Thank you.
Bo Deval, Coltville Road, short and simple. Agriculture, commerce, and farms should not be diminished on a land use plan, and map is mapped as non-existent. A land use plan needs to plan and reflect the actual land use. This under-represents farms. Thank you.
Living Vertraud, Chris Road. I'm not going to read the declaration that I read last week, but that section of articles... I'm not gonna read the declaration that I read last week, but that section of Article one, Section one, Article one, is relating to those who sit as elected representatives that have, that we, the people, have the power to make the changes in this body. The Constitution doesn't tell us how to do it, nor does it say it is referring just to election time, because that's what we hear a lot. Any power this body thinks it has is actually in the citizens of Hamilton County. We had valuable input with Plan Hamilton. We had zero input with this resolution. In fact, this resolution blatantly disregards our voices and input. There have been two polls, which one was the Chattanooga, and that was ninety percent against. We had a straw poll at the GOP meeting where the resolution was voted down by a landslide. I suggest that someone on the, well, we've already talked about that. We do not accept a one-size-fits-all cookie cutter plan. We do not accept a plan prepared by an organization that stands to profit from their plan. Your oath is to individuals, we, the people, not an organization. So, my question is, why are we moving forward with a vote on a resolution that we, the people, are strongly against? Your vote today will be on record and we will not forget this in the next few months as election season rolls around.
Sabrina Daniel, forty-four ten Maryland Drive, teacher administrator. I support the Hamilton plan and I encourage others to do so. In the Oxford Dictionary, there's a conflict of interest situation. It's a situation in which a person is, is in a position to derive personal benefit from actions or decisions made in their official capacity. Example, Watson quit his job.
Hang on a second, ma'am. You say you support?
I support.
Okay, then you're taking up the time of the other group, so you'll need to, you'll be on their ten minutes. This is oppositions only.
Opposition to Plan Hamilton?
This is oppositions. There's two sides. There's ten minutes those that are against and ten minutes those that are for, so you're taking.
I'm just, I'm just speaking, so I need to step back and.
So, you'll need to, when it comes time for the, for those that support, then, then you'll come speak on their behalf, okay, on their time. Okay, so the time? We got it, is that right? Okay, all right, good deal. All right, new time.
Rufus Marie, two thirteen Dawn Street, Signal Mountain, Tennessee. I cannot speak for any other areas, but I can speak for Signal Mountain. Signal Mountain is supposed to be a family community. When the surrounding creeks are so polluted with the overflow of sewage that children can't safely play in them, then we do not need to increase the density of the properties to have even more people. The schools are overcrowded and the roads are over trafficked. So, I ask this commission vote no on this resolution.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Kelly Sullivan, twenty-three hundred Talking Leaves Drive, Udoa. I am here on behalf of my neighbors who cannot be here because these are not scheduled conveniently for the general public. I wanted to bring up the fact that in the White Oak Mountain area, we do have explosive growth. Statistics going back ten years, where you throw the entire county, unincorporated county, is comparing apples to oranges. I want to see statistics for the last three years for the area where I live. I can tell you, Udoa Ringo Road, Udoa Georgetown Road, they're two-lane roads, there are subdivisions going up on either side, tons of houses, the proposed density five to over seven plus per acre. We are dealing with horrendous traffic. We've got infrastructure issues. The roads need to be improved. Schools, it, it is ridiculous. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Commissioners and everybody. My name is Ellen Abig and I live at twenty-nine, I forgot my address, twenty-nine thirty-two, Alpine Bluff Trail. I'm in the same neighborhood as Kelly and I am also representing my neighborhood. Speaking of the White Oak Mountain area, as Kelly mentioned, it is overrun, traffic, it, the accidents that happen right on Standifer Gap are immense. There's no safety guards, there's no infrastructure, there's, with this plan, there's no consideration for people's safety. Never mind the overcrowded schools, never mind the overcrowded developments, never mind the increase in crime. There is nothing put in place. And the developers, great, but you're not taking into consideration the overall plan of the infrastructure. So, why are not, they not responsible for doing that? Why, where are the studies, the unbiased studies that show what will happen if they increase the population of these areas? Where is it? I would like to see it. I needed to see an unbiased study as to what will come down the line. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Mendel. My address is twenty-two forty-seven Little Bin Road, unincorporated, Hamilton County. I live in an area, I used to live in College Dale. I understand their problems. Signal Mountain is a different problem. Our roads, there's one, really one way up, one way down for the builders. Everything goes through the town of Signal Mountain, it's on their roads, accidents, et cetera. I live by Robertson Road. They shut down Robertson Road in the winter. They shut down the W in the winter. Everybody ends up going one way down. Has the mountain been shut down before? Yes, it has, totally and completely. It's something to consider. You're gonna put two hundred, four hundred more people up there, they need a way up and they need a way down. And also our services, fire departments, ambulance, et cetera. It's important, something to think about. Thank you for your time.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Barbara Reynoldson. I live at seventy-one twenty McDaniel Road in Harrison. Don't have lots of facts and figures, just observations and mostly echoing what you've already heard. Lots of growth, but no infrastructure increase. Roads are still narrow and windy and the, what I'm concerned about is lack of emergency services, fire, ambulance and that. Out where we are, it's a volunteer fire department. There, there needs to be more infrastructure and we also need to be aware of environment, cutting down all the trees, damaging habitat for animals. We, we need to keep green spaces and watch for the floodplains like have been discussed already. Thank you.
Got ten seconds.
My name is Brandon Willhoyt, forty-four eighty Wesleyan Road. I'm opposed to it as a local farmer and a young voter, so please keep that in mind. You are destroying our generation, not to mention the infrastructure of the county.
Okay. If the, I see there's three more people. You guys can be a part of the rebuttal, but we'll get five minutes, is that okay? All right. Julian, ten minutes total for those that support.
Julian Bell, three-two-two-one Harrison Pike here for the, the housing industry. And, Mr. Chairman, I won't take ten minutes. I've spoken many times on this. Commissioner Graham, last week you said, let's bring up something new. I don't know that there's a whole lot new, but what I do want to point out is that the, the plan with the amendments does in fact reduce density. The countryside residential zone would limit septic tank development to one point five units per acre, less than what is allowed. The suburban residential place type would limit density to five units per acre. So, anybody that was to rezone to, to something that is above one and a half or even three, if it's on sewers, is limited to five. So, the plan does reduce density. The plan will change the look and feel of development in the unincorporated areas of Hamilton County. It has buffer zones, landscaping requirements, perimeter screening, setback requirements, sidewalk requirements, and yes, a reduction in the ability to develop in the floodplain. And those were all put into the plan at our suggestion. We, we proposed those prior to the May Planning Commission meeting. That's why they're in the plan. We understand the challenges that come with development. We want to be responsible, believe it, we are responsible. But I would like the, the argument or the, the advocacy to be framed on what's actually in the plan. Again, we support going forward with the plan. We support with the amendments that are being offered.
Good morning. My name is Jason Farmer. I am the owner of Riverstone Construction, Riverstone Development, six zero zero five Century X Drive. I'm a home builder and a developer in Hamilton County and surrounding counties. Also live in unincorporated Hamilton County. I counted, yesterday I have projects in six of your eleven districts. Some of those projects are on five acres. I have a deal in Commissioner Shipley's district, I could build over two hundred houses. I'm building forty houses on five acres. I have multiple deals in Commissioner Highlander's district that are on two or three acres. I have a deal in Commissioner Smith's district that is much more dense, it's a townhouse district. We've met the market there. That's what we look at. We meet the market, we, we, we study, we meet the market. I'm proud to be a home builder in Chattanooga. There's a bunch of opposition that stood up over the course of this. I've built some of their houses. I'm proud that I'm standing here today in support of private property rights. I'm proud that I'm here supporting the American dream and that a lot of people in Hamilton County, that's their, that's their, majority of their net worth is their home. I think this county needs to grow. And we've been called evil and greedy and all kinds of things through this process. I sit next to a bunch of those same people at church on Sunday. We sit on boards with them. Commissioner Baker and I were very part of, a large part of building a high school on Signal Mountain. Yes, that caused growth. We're not the enemy, we're not special interests. We are, we are a group, we're, we are a large group of people that, that has, employs a tremendous group of people, provides a tremendous amount of jobs in this county. Homeownership is important. I'll say that one more time, homeownership is important. To own rental houses or their, you know, I have great respect for my tenants, but homeownership is the American dream and it's been the American dream for as long as I've been alive. And I'm proud to stand here and support that. We have been at the table many times through this process. I feel like that our organization on behalf of homeownership has given. We have. Do we, are we happy with this plan? No. Is the other side happy? I, I, no. But the county needs to grow. When the infrastructure conversation happens, I promise each one of you, I'll be the first person at the table to talk about it. Do we have infrastructure problems in this county? Absolutely. Are we unable to build on sewer and most of the unincorporated parts of the county? Absolutely. Let's have that conver, let's, when this plan is done, let's have that conversation. But we do not need to limit homeownership in this county. It's something we should all be proud of and I stand here today and I tell you, I'm proud that I'm a real estate developer in this county, I'm very proud of a homeowner. And when I sit at the closing table, and I do, and I look at people, no matter if it's a two hundred and thirty, ninety-nine thousand dollar townhouse or a million dollar house, they are incredibly happy and they're incredibly proud of what they bought and they are very excited to be part of this community. Thank you.
Okay. If something, do you want to talk? Since you, you support this resolution, anything you want to add? This is your time now.
I'm gonna not go back and start all over again, but.
Name, address, please.
Oh, Sabrina Daniel, forty-four ten Maryland Drive, teacher educator, that's my background. I apologize if I was out of line. You know, I'm not real familiar with all these processes, get a little confused, but thank you for correcting me. And where I was, was talking about conflict, conflict of interest. An example, Watson quit his job after questions about a possible conflict of interest. On our board, on a board, potential conflict must abstain from voting on matters and they must recuse themselves from any discussion or decision on which affects their personal, business, or professional interest. We do have some, some conflict here. And so, what I'm asking is that you listen to your conscience and do the right thing, excuse yourself, and that others vote for Plan Hamilton. I agree with the lady who talked about Udoa Ringo Road. I'm on that road once a week and I'm not anti-development, but I am for having roads that accommodate what we are developing. Lots of folks have said this, I, I don't know if this might happen, but what about a head-on collision on Udoa Ringo Road and then someone decides, since we're lawsuit happy, that we're gonna sue the county because they didn't do the roads the way they needed to? And that may be an absurd example, but maybe not. I just want to make a final statement. I support Plan Hamilton. I support getting on with this. We've spent three years, lots of meetings, we're wearing the public out, whether we mean to or not. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wants to speak that supports? All right, so we will stop the time. We'll go to five minutes, five minutes rebuttal. Start your name and address.
Greg Lewis, fifty-five fifty-five Hunter Road. I just want to say, all the data supports the statement that this resolution is a bad idea. All of these counties that we've talked to, they're going in the opposite direction. So, they think it's a bad idea too. That's the conclusion they've drawn. I ask you not to pass this resolution and at some point in time, we have so much data to share with you guys that points, points us in another direction. Thank you.
Mike McElhans, one-six-six-eight-one North Star Circle, Stell Creek. This resolution will negatively say, will negatively shape the county's general plan for the next twenty-five years. Such a long-term blueprint should be free and clear of any and all conflicts of interest to preserve the public trust. Public reports identify the author of this resolution as an active home builder with recent projects in Chattanooga and North Georgia. Even if only one or two homes are built each year, real estate development is one of the easiest ways for benefits to flow indirectly to friends, family, and associates. I believe everyone should have the opportunity to succeed in their profession, but when policy directly impacts that profession or those close to it, the right thing to do is to step aside from writing or at least voting on it. This is not about targeting any individual, one person, it's about a consistent standard. Any commissioner with ties to the development of or the sale of real estate who could reasonably benefit now or in the future should recuse from this vote. Our county deserves a growth plan written and adopted without any appearance of self or special interest. This is how you can protect the integrity of the process and restore the confidence of the people that you serve here in Hamilton County. And I would also like to add that when you hear the same thing over and over again, that should be a clear message. The Plan Hamilton County was, was very clear and easy to follow. And do you want government to tell you what to do with your property is a weak and false argument? Currently, anything major that we want to do with our properties, we have to run through government. Thank you.
Got just under three minutes.
My name is Glenn Hodges. I reside at nine-one-two Dunson Ain Road, Signal Mountain, Tennessee. Honorable Commissioners, it's a pleasure to speak with you today. I remind you that each of you, every one of you individually are responsible for representing your individual districts. Overwhelming, I have heard people talk about why Plan Hamilton is not good. You need to have a plan that represents each of the districts based on their individual needs, not one plan fits all. This is wrong. For example, Signal Mountain, the terrain is far different than any other districts. So, why what's correct in other areas would be correct there. The Mayberry-type atmosphere that most of us loved and chose to make Hamilton, or Signal Mountain, our home, is disappearing. Mr. Bell, who's developing. Mr. Bell, who's developing, was raised, I believe, on Signal Mountain. His father had a quite large area there in the newer section of Hidden Brook, but he no longer lives there. There are people on this commission that seem to be favoring special interests. The Commissioner from District Seven, a home builder. He says he no longer is a member of the Homeowners Association, but he builds in.
Let's do this. Let's, let's don't, we can't point out somebody.
Builds in Tennessee and hasn't built in this state of.
We've got to continue another conversation. We can't, we're not here to point out.
Well, I request that he recuse himself. What's to say that he won't build in Tennessee after this resolution passes? Bear in mind, and he also said he had a few lots squirreled away.
Let's expire the time, this gentleman. And we've got a minute. We've got right at a minute left for.
Well, I think we need to think about the roads, the.
Your time's expired, sir.
The potholes that are developed on Signal Mountain Road. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. We got about a minute left.
My name is Kathy Faulkner. I live at 5721 Island View Drive in Harrison. I'm only here to point out a couple of things. Overwhelmingly, the people that elected you do not want this plan, do not want this resolution the way it sits now. We can go back to the table. We can amend later, but it's hard to do once you open that floodgate. Think about all the people that aren't here today. Look at all that are. There's a lot of people that couldn't make it here today because they're working. We're here representing them. Think about the oath you took to represent those people. And when you go to vote, remember what you do has consequence. Thank you.
All right, we got about 10 seconds, nine seconds left.
10 seconds, we want to do Tommy Farmer, Signal Mountain, 7935. I echo, there's nothing else that can be said about this. We even go to other districts. We went to a district this week with Mr. Grams. It was a great meeting out there. The poll said, the people said, the straw poll said it, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Five minutes. Any rebuttal? Okay. All right. So they declined to have their five minutes. So we'll open up to back to Commissioners, Commissioner Highlander.
Thank you, Chairman. I had a call from one of my constituents last week and from the wife of a, of a young man who's a firefighter, first responder. And he had an accident at his home. He put his arm through a glass and cut an artery. And this is according to the wife's testimony. She said she would like to be here, but both she and her husband, her husband's on limited duty now, but they would like to be here. He said they live a mile, less than a mile and a half from Fire Hall on Hickory Valley Road and it took them almost 25 minutes for an ambulance to get there because of the traffic. And she said, please, please, and she, on her behalf, I'm speaking for her, for this constituent. She said, please ask the, the commission to consider working on infrastructure before we add density. She said, please. She said, my husband lacked, my husband, my husband lacked 60 seconds of bleeding out. And had he not been a firefighter and had the knowledge, he had a neighbor bring a belt and put a tourniquet on his arm. That's the only thing that saved his life. He had that knowledge. So I, I'm concerned about safety. I appreciate what the home builders do. It's an honorable profession. They do a great job and I appreciate them. I truly do. But we need to get our infrastructure fixed for safety before we add density. Thank you.
I'll remind the crowd, this is a very, very sensitive topic that we're talking about. For my chair, I've got a seatbelt on because there's rules for me that I can't do certain things. So I will ask you, please refrain. I'll have some comments here in the middle that come from me, but I'll ask you, please, to refrain from applauding and so forth. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I haven't commented on this a whole lot in all the time that we've been discussing it. And that's often because I like to listen and take things in. And before I comment specifically on the nature of this particular resolution, I can't help but feel the need to address a few other things that were said. Despite my feelings on the intent of this resolution and the purpose and where I stand in my community, I think it's important, at least to me, to say this, so I'm going to. I've got a couple of comments I want to make. First of all, the intent of a commissioner bringing the particular resolution forward, which is different than what was originally put into Plan Hamilton in the amendments, should be commended, not criticized. There is absolutely no need or pressure of anybody up here to take the time to make the home builders and Realtors mad and the community mad, all at the same time. But the time was spent anyways. The intent, while you may disagree with, should not disparage the individual that is trying to do what is best in his particular mind for the district and for the county. I applaud the effort. I may not necessarily agree with a resolution and this will not be the last one, but I have the utmost respect for any member of this body that takes the time to do the amount of work that very few people in this building know how much time it takes to do it. And the criticism that they are going to get for it. It is a lot to undertake. So I just want to make that clear. I have the utmost respect for the commissioner that brought this forward. As far as what happened last week and comments that were made on a conflict of interest, I typically won't discuss this either, but I'm going to. I've done this particular job, maybe not at the county, for a very long time. And while I totally understand the viewpoint of those that may be in opposition and the emotion that that brings forward, a conflict of interest, when discussed publicly and announced publicly, does not prohibit that individual from voting. They are here to represent their constituents and they are not, as long as it is a clear announcement of here is what I do, how I do, how I'm connected. It is no longer a conflict of interest. It is up to that individual to make that determination at that point in time. If in fact it was illegal, they would not be able to cast the vote. So again, I understand the emotion in that. But going back to the person that's been challenged and questioned, I have the utmost respect for him and will support him in his decision to vote or to recuse himself. Moving forward, moving on, I should say, what we're looking at today is a plan. It does not force these things to take place. It does not force higher density. It does not force lower density, anything else. It is a plan for RPC to follow. And it's important to have that distinguish, distinguishment between there. We are talking as if this is, this means that all development moving forward will fall guys to this without coming back before this body. And that's just not true. It's important to understand that it is a plan. Now, oh, and one other point. Not approving this or approving this in no way stops development. I'd really like to quit hearing that. It does not. Development is occurring today without us ever taking action on this and that is not going to stop. So all that said, I do want to point out, in all the time that we have been talking about this issue, I have seen that microphone in that wall full of people. I've seen this room full of people. When the chair announces, those in favor, please line up. Those opposed, please line up. I only see constituents, specifically constituents lining up in opposition. I see home builders and Realtors lined up in favor. That is a distinct difference as an elected official that sits in this seat. Now, saying that, I want to also make this comment to those of you that might feel one way or other towards the Realtors and the home builders over here. There is no greater cheerleader for our community than the Realtors we have working for this community. They are the ones that are meeting new people. They're the ones, they are the face to many people coming into this community. They talk more about who we are than we have an opportunity to. We'd all be without a home without the home builders. So I have the utmost respect for what they do as well and shouldn't be villainized in this particular process. Again, not that I agree, but I do not believe that they should be villainized. They are here in speaking on these points and they have every opportunity in respect to. They're also constituents, by the way. So my district specifically, I want to, actually, right before that, I do have one other point that gets to me a little bit. Again, I appreciate the emotions that are brought forward on these issues, especially from constituents. I've heard from many hundreds actually on this topic. I don't believe that any one of the 11 of us up here need to be reminded who put us here. I don't believe any of us need to be reminded the importance of our decisions. This is one topic that many of you are here for today. We vote multiple times a month on multiple issues and every single one of them impacts our constituents. And I promise you, every person up here knows that when they cast a vote, they are speaking for their constituents and that vote is on record. I know I do. So going to my final comment. I've been in a lot of community meetings. I've had some. I've talked to people directly. With the exception of one individual that approached me this morning, I have had zero of my constituents in favor of this plan. Not specifically Plan Hamilton, but primarily the higher density amendments. I personally would be sitting in that audience with the same voices them if I was not sitting in this seat when it comes to higher density in my district. There is much about this plan. I do appreciate much about the plan. I hope that we work into a final version one day that we get to. But as it sits today and as the resolution promotes, it is not something that I support. It is not something that, again, except for one individual I spoke with this morning, any of my constituents support. And those are the individuals whom I represent in this seat. And those are the individuals that I will be voting to represent when this item comes up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Highlander, do you have something?
Very briefly, sir. I appreciate what Commissioner Smith said. I think he's, we have, on this dice, if I may say, we have very varied, different opinions. But one thing that I've enjoyed in my four, four years, four and a half that I've been here is that we have respect for each other. I was appointed before the last election, served about a year, year and a half. And, but I will say, we have had respect and I have respect for every single person, whether I agree with them on every issue or not. And I think that's, the general public needs to do that as well. And I appreciate the efforts they put forth. I disagree with, with this plan being approved right now and I tend to vote that way. But that does not mean I do not have respect. I have tremendous respect for the home builders and also for the Realtors and for their job. They do a really good job and I appreciate what they do. I may differ with them on an issue, as I may with some of my brothers on the commission. But I want to thank you all, each of you gentlemen on the dice, for your efforts to work together. And we need, whether we, even when we, when we disagree, we can be over, it's over and done with. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Sharp?
Chairman, thank you. I'd never considered this before. But all this talk here, the last few minutes, I felt compelled that I should probably disclose that I've recently been licensed as a Realtor. It never occurred to me that, that, that might be perceived as a conflict, but apparently some people have that perception. So, you know, I had a, I'd been talking with my wife about how we were going to let people know this in like, in an effort to go to work, right, as we all have to go to work, right? But it never occurred to me that it may be a conflict here. And if that is perceived, let me assure you that it is not. It is not. Yeah, I'm a rookie. I mean, I've never shown a house. I've never, never called someone, asked them to buy a house or if I could represent them in an agreement or, I've never done any of that. But I hope to at some point in time and I really look forward to doing so with my wife and a good group of folks. But not to make this about me. I just did not want that to come up later and me think, wow, I should have said something about it. So here I'm saying it. So, oh yeah, I should also say, in no shape, form, or fashion will I allow this ever to influence my vote. Just won't do it. So anyways, thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
Thanks, sir. Somebody mentioned earlier that, that county tax money is not, is spent, that comes from the city is spent outside. And I might want to remind them that 63% of our budget goes to Hamilton County schools and about half of those schools are in the city of Chattanooga. So just as an FYI. Oh, and then we also have Hamilton County EMS. So there's a lot of money that's spent within the. Health department. Yeah. Yeah, keep on, keep the ideas coming. Anyway, you get the point. There's a lot of money that's spent within. So, jail. Thank you. There you go. I like the way you guys pitching it. You know, I, I, I hope, and I heard this word about respect among us, you know, that, and that's what I've enjoyed. But you know, the reality is, reason why we're so forthright is that there are four commissioners that don't have any unincorporated land. Commissioner Shipley has 83% unincorporated. I've got 66%. Commissioner Smith has 43%. Commissioner Hilton has 79%. Commissioner Highlander is 93% unincorporated. Eversol, Commissioner, 71%. And Commissioner Graham, a small 16%. The rest do not have. And so I hope they can appreciate why we are so concerned about growth. We all agree, we own growth, but it's got to be done right. We've said again, that commissioners represent through districts. In fact, one commissioner, a year ago, was talking about short-term vacation rentals and there were, you know, comments like, my side of town is completely different. If it was available in my district, but it was made available to any other commissioner that wanted it. Any commissioner could opt in or opt out. That's really what we're saying, is that we're all different. We should be respected by our colleagues to all be different. We talked about the surveys, Reagan Smith, 93%, Chattanooga, 89%, Strahpul, 95%. You know, we're, you know, and as Commissioner Smith said, you know, we're aware of that. We're aware that we're elected by the people and that's obviously very important. Just last Friday, I was having a meeting and I got a call from a constituent and said, help, there's a tree down on the W road and they've locked the gate at the top. So it was at the bottom, the gate top was locked. They couldn't get out. So I called Chief Deputy, is that, is that right? Sheriff, Chief Deputy Daniels? I always get deputy chief, chief deputy. Anyway, I called him. He made, made the call and then they vetted people that needed to get down. So that was Friday. It was open Saturday, had a storm on Saturday. Another tree went down on Taft, the main, the main highway. So my wife and I were going to dinner and, and we drive and we see, oh, blocked. So we go to W, everybody and their brother's there. A lot of people don't know how to drive the W. It was kind of fun. I mean, it was really kind of fun. I mean, because there, there's a courtesy to, to it that some people understand and most don't. On the way back up, it was dark. We were coming back up because the front was still closed and we were going up the W road and there's a police car, sheriff's car, sorry, and pulled over. You'll school me one day or another.
Star car.
Star car. Anyway, it was, pulled somebody over. I think, I think somebody had problems with their car. The point was, now we're down to the W road with one lane. And so, so my point is, what's different about Signal Mountain is that we're, we're, we're never going to have more than three roads, one of which is, well, about 10 years ago, half of it fell away. But, you know, and then Roberts Mill. So we got one main road, two wagon roads in, in the W road, Roberts Mill. So, so the reality is, you know, that one size doesn't fit all. And, and, you know, that was just proven last Friday. We, floodplains was proven last Tuesday. I mean, you know, I happened to be caught in that water. Fortunately got out, but I was right in the middle of it too. So what I would like to do is introduce an amendment to, if you could pass that down, an amendment to this. an amendment to this. And we're not talking about stopping building, but I do, I would like to introduce this amendment. I would like to make a, a motion for this amendment and I would love a second.
I'll second.
Okay. I'll, if I can, I'll explain the amendment to you. Got, for you?
You have another copy?
Yep. Hold on. You got more bound down there? There you go. Thank you. Here you go. Not really. I'm just going to hit the highlights of it. So, so if you look at section one, you know, when we started talking about the frequency of amendment, of making amendments, it was, it should have been like five years, but they agreed on a year. And then the suggestion was every other month, every side of the river. So, so this says for the first year after the adoption, there should be four opportunities to consider rezoning applications that deviate from the current version of Plan Hamilton. After the first year and thereafter shall be two opportunities per county year to consider zoning applications. So it's gone from really a five years to one year to quarterly. And what was recommended was every other month. So that's pretty close. That's pretty close. I think that's, that says a lot. If you go to section three, we said infrastructure, we talked about transportation systems and road level of service, water sewer capacity, stormwater management, schools, emergency services, and utilities. We think these are all important considerations for when you, when you, when you're doing a plan, right? I mean, we got to make sure you got the right roads and stormwater and schools and emergency services and so on. We, under section four, we talked about plan amendment criteria, consistency with Plan Hamilton and other adopted county plans, presence of substantial documented changes and conditions, clearly demonstrated legitimate community need, compatibility with surrounding zoning and land uses, and support for logical orderly development pattern. Number six says planned provision for, of required infrastructure, avoidance of spot zoning, no significant negative impact on surrounding property, and no significant adverse effects on natural environment. So then you get down to section seven, and this is where we talk about the lot size. So the lot size for A1 is suggested on developable lot size. In other words, if you can build on it, then you should have a half acre, 21,780 feet, square feet, and, and that would be two per acre, which is, by the way, is what we do now, except it's, it's on gross, we're just saying, but it on buildable land. And they're suggesting one and a half on gross, we're saying two. That's a pretty good compromise. So, so we've stuck, we've taken the review and made it quarterly instead of every other month. That's pretty close. And we've made it two per acre. I think that's very reasonable. But we said, you know, what obviously considerations need to be in take, taken in place for water bodies, wetlands, flood hazard areas, cars, features of singles, abandoned mines, a favorite of ours on Signal, steep slopes, land required for roads, utilities and all community infrastructure, including stormwater and wastewater facilities. This to me makes sense. This to me makes a ton of sense. It's, it's, we're not saying, you know, I've heard this from, you know, all of us, we're not stopping growth, we're saying responsible growth. Two per acre on, on buildable acres, not a bad idea. And quarterly review, the first year, which by the way, is when most of the review is going to happen. Again, a great, a great effort. I, I think this is a great amendment. I think it, it keeps us all running together. It's, it's, and I'd like to thank a ton of people for the help in, in creating this because this is not done in a, in a, in a, in a cave. It was done with a lot of people, with a lot of eyes, with a lot of concern. This is what I presented to the home builders. I think it's a very good idea. I would wish they would consider it. You know, I understand that, that they might be harsh because it's on buildable ground. I don't think so. Two per buildable acre is very reasonable. That's my amendment.
Mr. Chairman?
Call for a question. Thank you. Let's, we've got a, we've got a motion on the table that's been for amendment. It's been sponsored and it's got a second. So that's what's currently on the table. What I want is clarification. I, I need clarification because I had to run and run. So Commissioner Baker, you're, you're saying that this, you want this resolution to take the place of?
This is an amendment.
So you want to, so you want to amend the entire resolution?
This is amendment 825-18.
Don't, don't. County attorney?
Well, I guess first of all, nowhere in this amendment does it talk about providing guidance to the, to the Regional Planning Commission? And it says adopt, that this is being adopted? I think this takes us back to the legal issue that we had before.
Okay. Don't get in ad guidance. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Just add guidance.
Okay.
Whatever terminology we need to have is fine. It's the gist of the, of the resolution.
So is the intention of the commissioner that this would be sent to the Regional Planning Commission?
Yes, ma'am. And I apologize for not making that clear. So if we could just make that the intent, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. So we've got a motion to amend, to change the resolution to this resolution as the intent.
Not, okay, just to change the language in it. Okay.
All right. Commissioner Beck?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, excuse me, just wanted to point out something. You know, this, this, this is interesting. I heard a second before this thing was all, was even passed out. I wonder how do, how do you get to that? What kind of conversations have been going on without the rest of us being involved?
I just, I, I can answer that if you'd like me to. I just asked them for the second, but there was no conversation. So if you'd like it for right now, afterwards, that's fine.
No, I heard a second while these were being passed out. You know, I've, I've said from time to time about last minute resolutions that I don't have a chance to study. And to ask me to vote on something, I, this is the first time I've seen it.
Yeah, we could wait 60 days for the study.
Just, just an observation, Mr. Chairman.
I don't think, I didn't consider this a new resolution. I think it's, it got turned.
Well, it says resolution at the top, then it said resolution.
I think it's, I think.
At the top of it.
Approached as a, yeah, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying this got, got turned in as an amendment.
That was very, that was very interesting to hear the second before, before it was passed out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sharp?
Thank you, Chairman. I too, I mean, I, I applaud our colleague from District Two for putting some work in and trying to find an opportunity for us to find more greater consensus. This being the first time I've looked at this, it gives me a bit of angst. I, I too prefer to have things in front of me in advance, particularly when there are several pages to, for consideration prior to a vote. You know, and one of the things, and, and this goes for the whole thing, that is, that still bothers them to me, like, I mean, there's a lot of changes in this Plan Hamilton, everything. None of it talks about how we're going to pay for any of this stuff, doesn't talk about industrial development. There's no cost analysis as what density provides regard to revenue, particularly on sewer and how we pay for sewers. I don't know. I, I don't necessarily disagree that, I mean, you can't disagree. Areas are different, topographies different, the soil conditions, all those things are different. Nobody can disagree with that. You know? Can we, can we isolate all of that stuff? I mean, not 60 days, I don't think. You know, maybe over the course of some time, you can do that kind of thing. How do you pay for it? I mean, that has not even been mentioned. You know, some people would say that, in, in some areas, you know, that, that there's a requirement honestly for incorporation before more urbanization of rural areas. And I can see how that can be smart. Some area, some parts of the country have urban road districts and enhanced patrol and fire districts, which have various tax overlays, right, to help fund those things. We didn't talk about any of that stuff. And I think those are all things that, that need to be discussed. I will say, I think that today, we've had more conversation on this deus, about these things than we've had yet, which I think is productive. Oftentimes I feel that these meetings are performative, that has always bothered me. I think that this is, I think this is good. But you know, I say, I don't know if I've said it once, I've said it a thousand times, to not allow our pursuit of perfection to get in the way of something better than what we currently have. You know, and if, if consensus is what we're looking for, it's certainly what you require in order to pass something new. I think that our colleague from District Seven has done a good job. Right now we have something different to, to look at. I'm not comfortable voting on this today. I do, I came in here with a thought that honestly, I didn't know what I was going to do. But as this conversation progresses and I learned a little bit more about the process, about the planning commission, now those meetings are going to, are to take place and it's going to come back to us, I, I'm more comfortable supporting the resolution that's on the agenda as presented, knowing that there's opportunity to make adjustments down the road. I applaud the efforts here. I'm not going to support this. I think we should move forward with a resolution that's on the agenda. I intend to work with the parties that be to try to find some more opportunities there. You know, to get more people comfortable with how we're going to move forward in the county. I've said a whole bunch of times, if y'all want to slow down growth in unincorporated area, build me a new high school in North Chattanooga and we'll have more people building there. You know, we'll take that. But we've passed on that opportunity thus far. So, you know, so I mean, I think there's a lot that we could work on. But I think I've said what was on my mind. I felt compelled to say, Chairman, thank you for the time.
Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I'd like to say, I do not, I appreciate what Commissioner Beck said and I understand the perspective he's coming from. Mr. Baker, after we got on the dice, I hope I have sang this correctly, said you're obviously have some questions about the current resolutions. And I said, well, yes, sir, I do. And he said, well, I've got an amendment I'd like for you to look at and consider seconding. While we were sitting on the dice, I read it, he did give me a preview, I read all the way through all three, four pages of it, and that's why I seconded. We did not discuss it prior to this meeting. I will just say that, but that's a very good point, Commissioner Beck, and I, I appreciate you bringing it up. When I was chairman of the school board, I tried really hard to make sure that we did not break the sunshine law and I certainly would not want to be accused of doing it. But thank you, sir, for bringing that up and I appreciate it. I would do, I would like to add too, I appreciate what Commissioner Sharp said, that every district is distinctly different. I, I mean, I've got relatives on Signal. I mean, there are two Cal path roads and, and one pretty good road that could be blocked from time to time. But also out in my area, if you have a wreck on 58, you may have to go, there are only two access roads to get to the interstate, you may have to go all the way to Cleveland. So we have different problems in every district and I appreciate what they do, and I appreciate what Commissioner Hilton's done, put the work he put together in that. I, I mean, while I'm not going to, I don't want to vote for it, I do appreciate it. It's got a lot of good points in it, just some that I don't agree with, but I respect him and I appreciate his work. Thank you.
Commissioner Beck, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, since I was called out, I meant no, meant no harm, but I, I still feel that there's a way to do things. In fact, I really liked the commission that brought forth this, this amendment, but I still need to study something before I vote on it. And so, and I've said that from time to time. Some of what I've seen in this amendment makes sense, but at the same time, I just need to know what I'm going to be voting on. And that's why we have an agenda session, we, we have these agendas and then we have a week to study what we're going to vote on the next week. So that's, that's my only thing, not to accuse anybody of breaking the sunshine law, but I just found, found it very interesting that a three page, three or four pages had a second before it was passed out. That's all right.
Commissioner.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Beck made a good point. Would it be appropriate for me to make a motion to delay this for one week? Would that be appropriate or not?
Go ahead.
If so, I would make that motion that we, in, in deference to Commissioner Beck, that we.
We've, we've got two on the floor.
Okay.
And we've got the original and we've got the motion, so we can't go more than two. So we can't. The rules do not allow us to, to go more than.
Okay. I stand corrected. Thank you.
Unless Commissioner Beck agrees, you know, I don't. We could take a recess for a couple hours because we got to be back up here at 3:30 anyways. Okay. Commissioner Shipley?
I was going to second Commissioner Highlander, but he can't do it, so.
Okay, seeing no more lights. We are voting on 825-18 being amended. Commissioner Baker? We're voting on the amendment.
Correct.
Not, not the resol, the original rest, the amendment.
Correct.
So Commissioner Baker made the motion, Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion. So Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
No.
Commissioner Chauncey?
No.
Commissioner Graham?
No.
Commissioner Hilton?
No.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes. So the amendment fails.
Fails.
Six to five.
Mm-hmm.
So we're back to the original.
Main motion.
The main resolution, which is 825-18. So we've gone around the world twice with amendments. So I see no lights for conversation on the original resolution. I guess I can say something, can't I? You know, as chair, you know, a lot of people don't realize this, as chair, you, you really get, you get hushed in, plant, this, this resolution is, is nowhere near what my intentions were as we originally started this. Because I've got, my, my area that I represent is the great people of Udoa, Georgetown, White Oak Mountain, Collegeville, part of Apson, and those great folks. And the, the intentions of this for me was getting something in place that we could stop the bleeding because we were getting hammered in that area with growth. And it, I kind of looked at it like this, I don't blame the home builders, I really don't. I think the home builders are folks we go to church with on Sunday. There are folks that's in front of us at the grocery store line and in the back of us at the grocery store line, and they're good, hardworking folks. And you know what? They're our neighbors. They live here in Hamilton, they pay taxes just like we do. They're homeowners, they're landowners that's in Hamilton County. And the whole goal is how do we come together to come up with this, you know, a happy meeting? Because we have to grow, we have to have some type of growth. But having the same across the whole county to me is, is wrong. We have to, we have to develop a strategy, we have to develop a plan to say, you know what? We have areas that can handle density, let's put it there. We've got commissioners that set up on this deus that, that, that can support more density, let's put it there. But then we've got areas up here that commissioners that can't support more density, that we don't need more density because we don't have the infrastructure in place, we don't have the schools that's ready for that capacity, we don't have fire services that can handle that capacity. There's other decisions that we need to be making. And I feel like at times that we're so quick to make decisions without thinking through some of the decisions we make, it, it really disturbs me because I, I was forced for 40 years to make decisions that had long-term lasting effects. And I think sometimes we make quick knee-jerk reaction decisions that, that are on the moment think sometimes we make quick knee-jerk reaction decisions that are on the moment and not for the long-term effect, and that really concerns me. I think sometimes we think more of certain decisions than we, sometimes we talk about the new people coming in, and we need homes, we got to get people here. What about the ones that already live here? Sometimes we forget them. And, you know, I think, to me, the ones that live here now are the ones that, to me, are just as important as the ones that are coming. And we need to balance that. We need to do a better job of that. And I think we do need to do that as a whole. We have an obligation. I appreciate Commissioner Smith's comments that, yes, every decision we make up here have an impact on every citizen in Hamilton County, whether they live in an incorporated or unincorporated. It has an impact. But this is one decision here that's going to have a lasting generational impact, and it's going to hurt us 20, 30, 50, 70 years if we're not careful. I think we can make better decisions. And I think, you know, I don't agree with, you know, if it's hurting, then we're at the right decision. I think we need to sit out at the table and say, you know what? Let's come up with a happy medium. And when we come up with a happy medium, we stand up and say, you know what? Both sides were heard. I don't like necessarily what the outcome is, but I can live with that. That's a good decision. And I've been in boardroom tables where we've made those decisions on whether to build in a community or not build in a community, whether to close something in a community or not close. I've been in those rooms where we've made those decisions. But it all boils down to, not what's coming, but it all boils down to who's already there. And I think we just need to do a better job in representing those that who are there. So, with my two cents said, Madam Clerk, we will call roll.
Commissioner Baker?
This is for supporting- Resolution 825-18 as originally written.
Thank you.
No.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
No.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Chairman Eversol?
No. Absolutely no.
Passes.
825-18 passes. We will take a 10-minute recess. We'll come back. Please don't make comments.
Especially with the shirt that says death on the back. You see that on the back, it says death.
No possibility.
On the back of the shirt.
Tell you what. What are we doing now?
I don't know, but it's well down the line.
I don't listen.
I mean, I got this.
Okay.
He said, if you do that, that's the legal way to carry yourself. So, I'm going to operate that.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, yeah.
So, he used it, I'm a lot like that.
No, I appreciate it.
Well, I mean, it's a truth.
But I wanted, I mean, I didn't want to be conceived as a threat or such, but-
Get the commissioners back to this, we'll go ahead and get started.
Roll call first.
Soon as we get everybody back, we'll start doing roll call. We've got our famous captain sitting at the door back there watching, trolling. No, we don't. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Beck? Mr. Chauncey?
Here.
Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Commissioner Helton? Dr. Highlander?
Here.
Dr. Mackey? Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Commissioner Shipley?
Here.
Commissioner Smith? Chairman Eversaw?
Here.
Commissioner Baker, the sheriff has asked if we can do his two finance items. He's the best. I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith. Oh, I said Commissioner Baker. Do you mind if we do those first, real quick?
Not at all, sir, happy to. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and bundle these and get them out of here a little bit quicker, if you don't mind. Please read 825-23 and 825-24, please.
Resolution 825-23, a resolution approving the purchase from Tennessee statewide contract SWC 209, vehicles to be utilized as unmarked vehicles for an amount not to exceed $154,895 for the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution. Resolution 825-24, a resolution approving the purchase of vehicles from Tennessee statewide contract SWC 209 in an amount not to exceed $847,000 for the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Thank you, ma'am, move approval.
Second. Commissioner Smith made the motion, Commissioner Shipley seconds that motion. It was louder.
Yep.
See no lights. Comments up here, no one standing.
Roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Helton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey? Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversaw?
Yes. 825-23 and 825-24 both pass. We will go back to the top of the agenda, if that's okay. We will, 825-13, please.
Resolution 825-13, a resolution to approve and accept applications for notary public positions, the bonds and owes of notaries previously elected, and the owes of deputy sheriff.
Move to approve, second.
Mr. Graham made the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconds the motion. No lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Helton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversaw?
Yes. 825-13 passes, 825. This bundle, 825-14 and 15.
Resolution 825-14, a resolution to appoint two members to the Hamilton County Employee Appeals Board for a two-year term beginning August 20th, 2025, and ending August 20th, 2027. This will appoint Bruce O'Neil and Kenneth Simpson. Resolution 825-15, a resolution reappointing one commissioner to the Hamilton County Agricultural Extension Committee for terms beginning August 20th, 2025, and ending August 20th, 2027. This will reappoint Commissioner David Sharp.
For approval, second. Commissioner Baker made the motion, Commissioner Highlander seconds that motion. See no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Helton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversaw?
Yes, 825-14 and 825-15 pass. We'll bundle 825-16, 825-17, please.
Resolution 825-16, a resolution making an appropriation to Red Bank Elementary School in amount of $1,000 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 2 and in the amount of $1,000 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 6. Resolution 825-17, a resolution making an appropriation to Saudi Daisy Food Bank in the amount of $1,000 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 1.
Move to approve, second.
Mr. Highlander? Made the motion, Mr. Baker seconds that motion. No lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Helton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversaw?
Yes, 825-16, 825-17 pass. The last two items on the agenda were added, they were late items. I think there will be kind of self-explanatory, we'll let each commissioner explain, 825-33 for reading the record. Very last, last page.
Resolution 825-33, a resolution recognizing the accomplishment of Saudi Daisy High School in winning the 2024-2025 Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association State Wrestling Championship and awarding funds from the Hamilton County Schools Champions Fund for the purchase of championship ring.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Beck made the motion, Commissioner Highlander seconds the motion. Commissioner Shipley, anything you want to add?
No, other than say thank you, the young men appreciate it, we had them here, you know that, y'all here. A good bunch of young men, knowing I think future wrestling, Saudi Daisy, they even going to get better. Thank y'all.
I think there was some confusion on when they turned in or when it would be paid and.
Yeah, there was confusion about getting the invoice to the county. Actually, we had tried to walk this on today. It's an approved item, but we have to do it each time.
Right.
They do have their invoice in, everything's good, thank everyone.
Okay, thank you, no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Helton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversaw?
Yes, 825-33 passes, 825-34, reading the record.
Resolution 825-34, a resolution making an appropriation to East Ridge Needy Child Fund in amount of $4,000 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 8.
Commissioner Beck made the motion, Commissioner Graham second that motion. Mr. Chauncey, you want to?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So, of course, most of y'all may already know that this is for the family that was tragically killed when their tree, a tree hit their car, in the night of the storm. Since that happened, they had set up their own fundraiser, they have, for their funeral arrangements, they've set up a GoFundMe account, they raised over $7,000. And this amount right here will get them right up to their goal. And so, what I'd like to do with your support, I got someone watching here, if we can get this, we're going to give them a family a call. Just let them know they got one last thing that they have to worry about when they mourn, to mourn their families. I appreciate it, so I got you, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beck?
Can we make an amendment to this and add $1,000 from District 5 discretionary funds?
You sure can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, another amendment? Mr. Highlander?
It's not an amendment, I just want to commend Commissioner Chauncey for taking his community effect and humanitarian effort. And thank you, sir, you did a great job, and I appreciate it very much. I had some of your constituents call me, I said, call Commissioner Chauncey, he's the man. And they, I think they both said they called you. Thank you.
Yeah, with that, if I may add, so I call her a silent hero in this. So, the young lady who called me and reached out to me, she actually lived at the property where the tree fell. So, you know, she kind of told me, went into kind of what all happened there. Obviously, it was a very dramatic experience for her. But I'd like to say we could try to make something good come.
I used to teach with her, and that's why she reached out to me. But I said, Commissioner Chauncey's the man, he will take care of you, anything I'll do, you know, can do, I will. I tell you, he will take care of you, and you did, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Attorney Varnell, we have to vote on the amendment.
We need a second.
Okay, so we didn't have a second on it. Okay, so Commissioner Beck wants to amend. Sound like Commissioner Graham's second. And that's adding $1,000, take the $5,000. Okay, so for the amendment, see one light, Commissioner Chauncey, do you have anything else?
I just want to thank Commissioner Beck for generosity, thank you all for your awesome prayers. I think, like I said, this will get them to their goal, and they'll be very appreciated. Like I said, this is going to be one last thing they have to worry about.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, only amendment, taking it from 4,000 to 5,000. See no more lights, no one standing, roll call, only amended to 5,000.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Helton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversaw?
Yes. Go to 825-34, we need to now vote as amended.
Yeah.
So, no lights, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Helton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversaw?
Yes, 825-34 is approved as amended.
If I may request, we get a revised resolution.
Typically, the attorney does that, I think. She looking? Okay, all right, we'll go back to the rest of our finances. 825-19.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Clerk, without objection, let's bundle 825-19 and 825-20, please.
Resolution 825-19, a resolution authorizing the county mayor on behalf of Hamilton County, Tennessee, the Health Services Division operating as the Hamilton County Health and Social Services Department to sign a continuation grant and aid contract for $633,928 for the Tennessee Department of Health to support the delivery of public health services for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Resolution 825-20, a resolution authorizing the county mayor on behalf of Hamilton County, Tennessee, the Health Services Division operating as the Hamilton County Health and Social Services Department to sign a contract with the Tennessee Department of Health in the amount of $219,200 to provide sexually transmitted infection and HIV education, prevention, and control services in Hamilton County for the time period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
Thank you, ma'am, move approval.
Mr. Smith made the motion, Commissioner Baker seconds the motion. No lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck? Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Helton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversaw?
Yes, 825-19 and 825-20 pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, 825-21, please.
Resolution 825-21, a resolution to authorize the county mayor to enter into and execute a contract with the state of Tennessee, Tennessee Commission on Children and Youth to receive $45,000 to be used for the court-appointed special advocate program within the Hamilton County Juvenile Court.
Thank you, ma'am, move approval.
Mr. Smith made the motion, Commissioner Graham seconds the motion, no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck? Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Helton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversaw?
Yes, 825-21 passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, 825-22, please.
Resolution 825-22, a resolution approving the purchase of one Volvo hydraulic crawler excavator from Ascenda Machinery from the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative amounting to $90,938 for the Highway Department and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Thank you, ma'am, move approval.
Mr. Smith made the motion, Commissioner Shipley seconds that motion. No lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck? Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Helton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversaw?
Yes, 825-22 passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, let's jump down to 825-25, please.
Resolution 825-25, a resolution accepting the bid of Bio Waste LLC for a three-year contract unit pricing with the option to renew for three additional two-year terms beginning September 1st, 2025 through July 31st, 2028 for medical and pharmaceutical waste disposal services for EMS in various county departments and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Thank you, ma'am, move approval.
Mr. Smith made the motion, Commissioner Shipley seconds that motion. See no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Helton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversaw?
Yes, 825-25 passes, we'll move, we'll move to Building Economics Committee, Commissioner Helton, 825-26.
Madam Chair, could you read 825-26, or Madam Clerk, excuse me.
Resolution 825-26, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into and execute a lease agreement between Hamilton County and the city of Saudi Daisy for property located at 9531 West Ridge Trail Road, Saudi Daisy, Tennessee.
Commissioner Shipley?
Second. You want to say anything about this?
Mr. Highlander made the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Helton actually seconded that motion.
See no lights. Commissioner Shipley, would you like to talk about this, are you okay?
Go ahead, I've got a lot to talk about. Number one, say thank you, I hope this is approved. For many years, our city has worked with everybody in that part of the county to furnish a senior center. And the goal here is to make it bigger, better. We have pool tables that are just covered up because we don't have room. But thing about our senior center, it started off very old people knitting and doing things. Now we have a younger generation of older people. They line dance, they do everything. This building is going to give us the room we need to make better for our people. So, I hope we support it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any more lights? Graham? Commissioner Graham?
Mr. Shipley, are you one of those line dancers?
Only I'm probably not.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Roll call?
I see no one standing either, so, roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Helton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversaw?
Yes, 825-26 passes.
Please read 825-27.
Resolution 825-27, a resolution adopted for the purpose of amending the Hamilton County, Tennessee zoning resolution regulating development within the unincorporated area of Hamilton County, Tennessee to minimize danger to life and property due to flooding and to maintain eligibility for participating in the National Flood Insurance Program.
No lights?
Well, you got to make a motion.
Oh, motion to approve, excuse me.
Mr. Helton made the motion, Commissioner Highlander seconded the motion.
No lights?
No lights?
Roll call.
Well, you got somebody standing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Helton?
Okay, Kim Helton, eighty-six eighteen Snow Hill Road, and this is the section of the zoning regulations that regulates the floodplain, and this is a section where floodplain could be, development could be prohibited, and I think that this should be amended to prohibit floodplain development. We can see in this graphic what happens when you develop in the floodplain on one side of the creek. The tree line that's here is now here, all of this water has been pushed to the other side because of the development of the floodplain, and so you're infringing on other people's property rights, you allow water to be pushed to their properties, and now, on the other side of this creek, in that area that has more flooding, they are now putting two developments in there, and there are stormwater ponds in the floodplain on both sides of this creek. Stormwater ponds are designed to hold the water, to release it at the same rate as it was pre-development, so it can have more water coming off the development than it did before, so not only are you developing within the floodplain, but you are allowing more stormwater because stormwater quantity is not regulated, so you're allowing more stormwater into the creeks, which exasperates the flooding too, so I would advocate for no development, no filling of the floodplains, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helton.
Can I say something? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Ronnie, this is, this is the one that you and I talked about last week, is that correct? All this is, is basically saying that we will follow the federal guidelines, the federal guidelines is all it's saying, this is kind of like, we're just doing some, some housekeeping, good point.
All right, Ronnie Blaylock, four thousand five Cromwell Road, yes, what this is, is just, we're having to adopt the new maps that FEMA have put in place since they redid their study. Once they get put in place, then if Hamilton County wants to amend and do more so, more stringent than what FEMA has required us on the new maps, we can do that at that point, but at this time, this is just us, I guess, would be approving or adopting or whatever the new maps that FEMA has put before us.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're, we're clear on that.
Yeah.
At a later point, we can come back when we do zoning and subdivision regulations, and we can actually create stricter
Yes, that is very correct.
standards, but right now, this is the minimum that the federal government says that we have to have in place.
We have to have in place.
We have to vote on this.
Yes, that is correct.
And, so, and hopefully, we have to pass it, otherwise, we can get in some federal issues.
Yes, that's exactly right.
And Mr. Blaylock, I want to thank you for getting those maps to me, we'll get them distributed to everyone, and we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hollander?
Commissioner?
Thank you, Chairman, just briefly, I, I, thank you, Ronnie, I appreciate what, what you clarified, that's the way I understood it, I agree with Ms. Helton, we need to have more strict regulation on the floodplains, I totally agree, but, but Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, Chairman Helton, we need to approve this one right now, and before we consider anything more strict in a later time.
This is kind of a pro forma vote.
Right, that's, that's, that was my understanding, but thank you for that clarity, and, and I'll just say, Ms. Helton, I approve and appreciate what you're saying, ma'am. Thank you.
Sharp? Commissioner?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, I, I'm just going to echo that, that we're not finished with this conversation, thank you.
That's it? All right. All right, we'll get on and get into zoning, Madam Clerk, please.
We got to vote, buddy.
Sorry. It's been an odd day, so we're ready.
Speak again, Ms. Helton? Is that, is that okay if she follows up?
So when you look at the resolution, it has the entire section of the zoning regulations that relate to the floodplain development, so it's not, if you look at the resolution, it has the whole section, but it includes the new maps, but, so that's where the confusion is for me, is this the entire section being replaced, or is this just, just the maps being replaced?
What it is, is everything that FEMA has brought before us is being replaced with their new regulations that has to be put in place in Hamilton County, and then, like I said, after it's put in place, and they get all their stuff set, then Hamilton County can go in and rewrite and make it more stringent than what they've done for the whole thing, but then we have to turn around and feed it back to FEMA to get their approvals on it.
It just creates a baseline.
That's, it's a baseline, is all it is, but yes, it is replacing everything that we have right now, as far as flood, and a lot of it's exactly the same, but it has taken areas out of flood, it's put areas back in flood, and the regulation's pretty much the same.
Thank you, Mr. Blaylock. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Helton?
Yes.
Dr. Hollander?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes, eight twenty-five twenty-seven passes. Mr. Chauncey? All right, thank you, Chairman, sorry about jumping the gun on that, Madam Clerk, please read eight twenty-five dash twenty-eight, please.
Resolution eight twenty-five dash twenty-eight, a resolution to rezone from R-two Urban Residential District to C-five Neighborhood Commercial District for the property located at fifty-five fifteen Main Street.
Thank you, I move to approve. Mr. Chauncey made the motion, Commissioner Graham seconds the motion. See no lights and no one standing? No one standing, roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck? Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Helton?
Yes.
Dr. Hollander?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes, eight twenty-five twenty-eight passes. Madam Clerk, eight twenty-five dash twenty-nine, please.
Resolution.
Would it be wrong of us to bundle those? Commissioner Chauncey?
That's a great idea, I'm all for it, Madam Clerk, is there any opposition here for any of these cases? The remaining cases, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one? I see none. Ms. Helton, if you want to speak to them, we can still bundle them, and she can still speak to it, I just wanted to kind of fill the room here, but, all right, that's fine, Madam Clerk, please bundle, eight twenty-five, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one, please.
Resolution eight twenty-five dash twenty-nine, a resolution to amend condition number one from Hamilton County, resolution number three twenty-four dash thirty-B of previous case number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero two eight, for property located at ninety-one oh one Amos Road. Resolution eight twenty-five dash thirty, a resolution to rezone from R-one Single Family Residential District, R-three Multi Family Residential District, and C-five Neighborhood Commercial District with conditions to A-one Agricultural District, R-one Single Family Residential District, R-three Multi Family Residential District, and C-five Neighborhood Commercial District with conditions for property located at ninety-one oh one Amos Road. Resolution eight twenty-five dash thirty-one, a resolution granting an amendment to residential planned unit development as approved by Hamilton County, resolution number three twenty-four dash thirty-one of previous case number two twenty-four dash zero zero two nine for parts of a property located at ninety-one oh one Amos Road.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Clerk, I move to approve. Mr. Chauncey made the motion to approve. Sound like Commissioner Beck seconded that motion. We have no lights on, Ms. Helton?
Kim Helton, eighty-six eighteen Snow Hill Road, first, I'd like to say that the R-three zone in this new PUD is, has a density of twenty-four point six five, which exceeds the allowed density of twenty-four per acre, the C-five zone doesn't seem to meet other certain parameters, and the two buildings that were combined into one, it's closer to Snow Hill Road, and the question of the elevation is on the last page that you have, that building where that will be is in the same elevation as the practice field and the church parking lot, so the elevation will be the same, and the resolution originally limited it to three stories for both buildings, now it's one building, and after this, Mr. Price took it to the Board of Zoning Appeals and asked for a fifty-feet height, this body put thirty-story height, but didn't put any feet limit, the facility, assisted living facility at the corner of Snow Hill Road and Mountain View Road is limited to forty-two feet for three stories by the Board of Zoning Appeals, now the Board of Zoning Appeals has allowed fifty feet for this, this is back off the road, back behind the main road, behind other businesses, it will be the tallest building in this area. There was some questions about whether or not Mr. Price told the community it would be fifty feet, I have the email exchange here, if any of you would like to look at it, and I asked the heights of the buildings, and the height we were given, the highest point would be forty-four feet for both buildings, so the community was not told all along that it would be fifty feet, and when the Board of Zoning Appeals made this decision for fifty feet, they assumed that the building at the corner of Snow Hill and Mountain View was also fifty feet, but the Board of Zoning Appeals did three stories, forty-two feet, so this would be the highest building around, and this is not what the community was told to begin with, it's moving closer to Snow Hill Road, and it's going to be higher in elevation, and it will be above the height of some of the other businesses and the high school, tractors fields, so we think that this should be limited to thirty-five feet. Also, just last month, the Planning Commission limited a building that's going to be on Mountain View Road to two and a half stories or thirty-five feet, and it's a facility, rehab facility, so they limited that to the main road, and this is going to be behind the main road, so this is not in keeping with the area, and we think that fifty feet should not be approved, thank you.
Commissioner Hollander?
We did have a detailed community meeting, and it was my understanding at that meeting, we had that it would be the forty-two-foot height, so I recused myself on this originally, but I want to vote no on this, it is in my district, I'm trying to keep it in line with what we told the people at our community meeting, thank you.
So, which resolution was that? All of them?
Twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one.
Did Commissioner Hollander, was he opposed to all three of them?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, we could probably just vote on all three of them, if, if there's a that's kind of almost reluctant to, to bundle them unless I kind of know that what the consensus is, but I'm going to let you if you, Commissioner Hollander, if you have every intention to vote all three of these down?
Well.
That's fine, I mean, if we had to do one vote, or do you want to split this back up?
You know, mathematically, if anything's incorrect, it's all incorrect, so what I was voting against was the height, I had additional height that the community was not aware of, but if I would have to vote for yea or nay on all three, I'd vote nay because of the height. Does that make sense?
Sure.
We can still separate them.
Okay, well, yeah, that's just three, and if you want to, we can just have three separate roll call votes, if no one else have any other
Yeah, they've already been read into the record, so we can, we can
I don't know, I need to look at them, I need to know the details of those two.
Okay.
Let's do the one about the height first.
Well, the one about the height is is thirty-one, so.
Take thirty-one first, then.
Okay.
Madam Clerk? Chairman, the one about the height is twenty-nine. Eight twenty-two, that's lifting condition number one, it's keeping, the Plan Commission recommendation was to recommend lift, condition, or amend condition one to add Amos Road, and no longer acting on the fifty-story, or the fifty-feet height, it's leaving that condition in place of three stories. Twenty-nine. Thirty is the rezoning, shifting the zoning lines around, and thirty-one's the new PUD, but twenty-nine is lifting or amending condition number one to add Amos Road for road widening and keeping condition number four of three stories.
I'm fine with widening the road.
Yeah, so that's what the resolution in front of you is, is to amend condition number one, to add Amos Road, that's the only thing that's changing, all the other conditions will stay the same.
The fifty-foot height, where is it?
It's not in that condition, the applicant asked for that at last month's Plan Commission, Plan Commission recommended deny that, so that's not in front of you.
Oh, okay.
Still held to three stories.
Okay. Three stories, but not fifty feet?
It's three stories.
It's three stories, but the Board of Zoning Appeals did, or Construction Appeals did grant the fifty feet, but that's not for this body to vote on today. We're still at three stories, which is the original condition.
Because it
What's that? Three stories can vary because of being commercial height of an apartment-type building, and what this does, it takes it to the apex of the roof, and it has been limited to no more than fifty feet.
I, I wish, if I might, if I might say, I wish that we had come back, when our community meeting was told it would be a certain height, I wish, rather than just going to the zoning appeals, as, as a courtesy to go back to the community, it would have been nice to have said, "We need to change this to fifty feet, and here's why."
I'm pretty sure at the time that those discussions were going on, I was indicating that that was the approximate height of what I was told at that time.
I, I was at the meeting, I understand, approximate, I heard a height.
I know, and I gave the height, and I gave the height of being approximately forty-four feet, that's what I was told at that point.
Right, other than, I did not hear approximate stated, that adjective was not stated to me, but anyway, okay, thank you. So we're not voting, so we're not voting on the height, correct?
Correct.
Chairman?
No.
Okay. Okay.
That's correct, we're not, Commissioner Hollander, if there's any objections, anyone from anyone, we'll go ahead and vote on all three.
Okay, that's fine, go ahead.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Baker?
No.
Commissioner Beck? Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Helton? Dr. Hollander?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Chairman Eversol?
No.
Five to three.
So eight twenty-five twenty-nine, eight twenty-five thirty, and eight twenty-five thirty-one fail.
Correct.
It's a rebuttal. Okay, that's all we got, Mr. Chairman, all right. We will move forward with announcements, Commissioner Shipley?
Going out, I'm hungry.
Mr. Baker?
Just a quick Audit Committee meeting, August twenty-sixth, at noon, McDaniel Building,
McDaniel Building, and just something for us to think about. I brought this up when, back in eighteen, when I was first on the commission. I think it'd be great if we changed our meetings to five PM. It gives people more access to us.
Correct.
Something to think about, you know? We can have a full day of work, come here and do our community service. I like it. Something to think about.
Give you more time to come off the mountain.
Take a sleep later.
Hey, hey, don't tell them the reward.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just really quick. Yesterday, we had some exciting news. Um, Alton Hickson, uh, announcing the new elementary school that'll be built on the DuPont site, and a lot of the really exciting details around that and the partnership with the Y. Uh, more details will continue to come as we move forward, uh, but super excited about that, and just want to, again, uh, thank the YMCA, their board, thank the mayor, his staff, for all the work that they did in order to bring this project to, to fruition, and to thank all of my colleagues up here for supporting that project and helping to move it forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing further.
Mr. Mack is not here. Commissioner Beck?
He's already...
Next, to Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Um, I just say, I, I believe I'd support, uh, our colleague from District Two's proposal there for evening meetings.
Could use your support.
I could, I could see, I see, uh, I see that as being a very, a big positive, you know? Um, we have a big impact on the lives of our schoolteachers, schoolchildren on this DAS, and, uh, when we're voting on, uh, the ability of the school board to offer a pay raise for teachers and better funding for our schools, all those teachers are in classrooms. They can't come here at all, and, uh, I think that might be a very good thing. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Hilton? Mr. Chauncey?
Uh, not any announcement, Mr. Chair, but I just, again, want to reiterate what happened last week. Thank you all for your thoughts and prayers for the, what happened, and, um, I just want to say that, and when it comes to our emergency services, we got the best in the business by far. I mean, when this all happened, I mean, we, every emergency service, every department, every agency from all four corners of the county swooped in seamlessly, and I just want to thank everybody. There's so many names to announce, and, but I just wanted to publicly just thank everybody who was involved in, uh, that night, including the innocent bystanders. So, we got a lot of heroes out there that we want to recognize, and I hadn't forgotten about them, and I plan on, uh, hopefully getting in touch with them and recognizing them as well. That's all I got. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. Please keep in mind the schoolchildren that are waiting on buses in the mornings all, all across this county. Uh, it's, uh, it's a very dangerous situation, especially when time change comes, it'll be even more dangerous, so, but thank you for that. Commissioner Chauncey, I, I just want to say again how much I appreciate you're stepping up for that family and all those that had trouble in the flood, especially in the low-lying areas. Uh, and thank you so much. I appreciate that. God bless all of them. Thank you.
Commissioner Graham?
Nothing, sir.
Attorney Varnell?
No announcements.
Mayor's office is left. Couple things. Number one is our compliance is today at McDaniel at three-thirty. Um, and that's our, that's a workshop. Um, and so, just a reminder that it's not here. It's at McDaniel. Um, I fully, 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 fully personally support changing our meeting times. Uh, I think that would be the right thing to do. I don't know how long or how many centuries we've had it at nine-thirty on Wednesday morning, but I think we need to keep up with, uh, with, uh, the changing environment that we're in, and, and I fully support us changing it. So, Attorney Varnell, would it be okay maybe us to go ahead and just work up a resolution? Is that, would be a resolution that would prevent, uh, that we would, uh, present to the body?
I can certainly work on it. I would ask the board to consider overtime and of the employees, particularly the sheriff's office, so I'll look into that as well.
Okay. Understand, but I think, uh, I think we've kind of left our, uh, citizens out. A lot of them, I mean, like here today, how many took off work to come sit, you know? And nothing against the home builders at all, but were they getting paid for being here? I don't know, but I can tell you, there were a lot of folks sitting on my left that weren't getting paid that were pretty much up front, said they were taking off work, not getting paid just to be here. So, uh, so this will respect them, uh, so I fully support that.
May I comment on that?
Uh, sure. Commissioner Highlander?
I agree wholeheartedly. We need to let the, the community have an opportunity. I probably should have said that at my time, but I, I think it's very important that they do. We might consider doing on the agenda sessions in the morning and then going back to the voting in the evenings or, or whatever, but to cut down on some of the costs for the county, but I think it's very important that our citizens have an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
All right. Uh, with that said, we'll go into public discussion. Um, talk about, uh, just discussion, anything other than zoning. You get three minutes. It begins with your name and address.
Kim Hilton, eighty-six eighteen Snow Hill Road. I'd just like to bring up something, uh, about the Tennessee Code and how the process works when a plan's adopted. Um, it, the process is laid out clearly in the Tennessee Code, and it says the plan is to be made by the Planning Commission. Then, the Planning Commission adopts it, and then they certify a copy to the County Commission and with a resolution asking for their approval or adoption. And the, so then, after that, the County Commission, there's a, a section here that outlines how the County Commission can request amendments to that plan, but it's only after adoption. So, I'm questioning the process of this body asking for amendments to the plan before it has been adopted by the Planning Commission, certified, and the County Commission adopted. If you'll see the, the outline in here, it's, there aren't any amendments that the County Commission makes to it until after the plan has been certified to the County Commission and the County Commission has adopted it. And also, I'd like to question a section of that resolution that was just adopted that says, "The Regional Planning Commission shall undertake all necessary steps to review, process, and implement said changes in a timely manner consistent with applicable laws, regulations, and planning procedures." So, it seems to be more than just advice. Um, so I'd just like to question those things and, and, and get that out there. Thank you.
I would recommend, uh, Ms. Hilton is, uh, make sure that where Karen is involved, uh, she can help you with some of those answers, because she's, uh, the acting director for RPA, so she can help you get those answers. And so, uh, and I know Attorney Varnell, when she asks questions, she goes straight to, uh, Karen, so that would be my direction I would go with, with questions, so... Uh, Mr. Sharp, did you have a comment?
Uh, I, I, well, I didn't, but I do now. Um, I just, uh, Chairman, I just wanted to, uh, express appreciation to Ms. Hilton for trying to keep us, uh, within the realms of the law. I do appreciate you bringing this. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next begins with your name and address.
Okay. Monty Bell, the homeless journalist, the gray-haired, like, fox, the man with the trillion-dollar voice. Happy to announce my address, seven-twenty-seven East Eleventh Street. That's the Homeless Community Kitchen, and it's been that for over twenty-two years. We got a case, uh, that's looking for a response next week. It's, uh, up the stairs here in your circuit court, docket number twenty-five C nine one nine, and it picks up where a young lady by the name of Tia Duggan's left off before her unfortunate faith at, uh, Reagan National Airport. She was lied to when she came here. Let me say that again. She was lied to when she came here. Uh, my book, "Bell Tolls For Thee," I had a person up on your DAS to warn people about the life of Monty Bell or anything that Monty Bell says or anything that Monty Bell does. I've never met this person outside of here, just like this judge, J.B. Bennett. I've never seen him, and he's been a part of my life for seventeen years. Not only is this spooky, it's creepy, and there's a word for a guy that pursues a man in the dark. If he hates black people, then let me suggest to all of you, he needs to leave this black man alone. Get out of the black dress. Come out of the dark from Signal Mountain, because every person that's charged with a crime is entitled to face their accuser. They have a judge on the circuit court making decisions and rulings in my life, and I've never met him. Got police all around me. I'm the homeless journalist, the gray-haired, like, fox, the man with the trillion-dollar voice. Women enjoy being in the company of Monty Bell. I don't want you men in dresses scaring them away. I don't want men with a pistol. These women come around Monty Bell because of what he was born with naturally. I don't know if that's going to get you today, but it'll get you before you go home. You gotta stop bothering people because you weren't born with the same things that they had and using law enforcement's and depretes and all this crap. You got until Thursday of next week. I'll make it even shorter than that. You got Wednesday of next week to respond. It's a case against racist white supremacy. You got a couple of days to respond. I hope somebody is telling you not to respond, because that goes to my immediate removal of office ousted that you stole and shared with another guy on the County Commission and UTC, but it's two-hundred-and-eleven billion, thirty-four million that you already owe. This next case is in the trillions. We'll see you next week.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Next begins with your name and address.
Thank you. Mike Price, M.A.P. engineer, seventy-three eighty Applegate Lane. I do want the commission to understand that because of the vote that was taken on the Thrive Development, we will no longer be able to do some of the improvements to Snow Hill Road and Amos Road. So, understand that that vote, you, there were three different items, and by taking action the way that you did, you've restricted the ability to provide the infrastructure that we've indicated that we were going to be able to do. So, just understand your actions have negative consequences as it relates to the community and what their expectations were. Thank you.
Okay. See no one else with that? We'll be... Commissioner Chauncey?
I was not on the prevailing side of those votes, but if anyone here wants to clean that up, be on the prevailing side of one of them to help this, uh, I'd be more willing to hang out and have that conversation, split them back up. I mean, it, like, but if it's not going to make any difference, we'll just, uh, forego it.
I would be willing to reconsider the improvements on the road if we can separate that. I, I think what really threw me off was the change of plans on the height and the fact that we had no control over that, and I thought it was very disingenuous that, that that was put in. Uh, I would be willing to bring back up the road improvements there, the infrastructure improvements. I would be willing to bring that back up, uh, possibly next week in recess meeting?
It, it, like I said, I, if any, you, uh, were on the prevailing side, if y'all want to do it now or later, I, you know?
I, it's with the numbers that we have, lack of numbers that we have here, I would prefer to bring it back up next week if that would be allowed. In recess. Correct. I would make that motion.
Any other comments, Mr. Price?
Well, we, we're motioning on items that's already been voted on. It, I think, uh, County Attorney and Madam Clerk, I guess, uh, what we would need to do, can we reconsider, uh, bring those items as reconsidered items, use the same?
Set her on today, and she can read you that rule there, rule twenty-four in your rules, or you can wait and do it later. You are in a voting session now, if you wanted to do it now.
As long as it's a motion by someone on the prevailing party.
Okay, well, Commissioner Highlander says he wants to reconsider but doesn't want to today. He has asked if we can do it in recess meeting?
He can.
Next week.
And I, I would like to bring it up. It's to specifically what changes are being made. I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to study it and know specifically, Mr. Price, what, what you've been changing. That's right. I'd like a copy of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Highlander.
Okay, so we'll put those on the recess items next week. Um, a little, a little more clarity around those, please, as, as we look at that. Okay. With that said, we'll be in recessed until August the twenty-seventh at nine-thirty AM.